Good afternoon, this is the April 12, 2016 public hearing. Zoning calendar items. New case is item number one, 15814DC, 1179 East 27th Street, Brooklyn.
Good afternoon, Lyra Altman from the office of Lyra Altman. We did attend your executive session yesterday and heard your comments. First of all, I'd like to apologize for the dimension error. We will, of course, have the plans revised so that the dimensions correlate to the survey. Instead of having a 9.3 translate as nine feet, three inches, it will translate as nine feet, three inches and a half, as it should.
But it's all the dimensions.
Yes, no, of course, I'm just using that as an example, which is the one you used yesterday.
Right, exactly.
I'm going to have every dimension checked, I will personally check it as well, of course, and make sure that it matches the survey perfectly.
Okay.
Regarding the dormer that penetrates the sky exposure plane...
9.3 is four inches.
Is it four? I thought it was three and a half that translated out, too. But we'll check every dimension and make sure. I thought it came out as .35.
Third, and 12 is four. Anyway.
Was it 9.3? Whatever it was, but I'll, we'll check everything. I can promise you that every dimension will be checked on the plans.
Okay.
And it will be correct. Next, the dormer that penetrates the sky exposure plane. It is actually permitted under 2362F, as long as it's no greater than the 50 percent of the width of the street wall. And it is not.
2362F?
That is correct.
Could you just have a note that this is complying with the dormer?
Certainly.
Just because it's not clear where that comes from.
I'd be glad to. Regarding the proposed total height, I know that you only had one example in the documents. I actually reviewed the documents yesterday through the city records only, not even looking at the site itself. I understand for my client that there are quite a few houses that are taller that I haven't been able to find confirmation on yet, but I could tell you, there are a number of homes in this block that are anywhere between 34 feet and 37, 11 and 3/4. As a matter of fact, the one that said 37 feet, 11 and 3/4 was a BSA approval.
Okay.
So there are a number on this block, and we'll gladly provide your board the proof of all of those heights that we discovered yesterday through both the tax department, the Department of Buildings, and BSA approvals. So all city records. Regarding the front extension, we do understand the concern that the first floor is at a certain point, and the second floor sets back. And the architect was very sensitive to that fact when he was designing this home. He looked at it, he said, "This is a consistent," I'll say, "fact" on the block, and he did want to maintain that. So what he did was he tried to come out as little as possible to still gain the bedrooms that this client needed for his home. So if you notice, it only comes out two feet, 11 inches from the building, so it would still have that setback appearance on the second floor from the first floor, so that it wouldn't affect the view of the block. That was very intentional on the part of this architect when he designed this home. I would also, I would also point out, by the way, many of the homes in the block do not have that same setback. It's just a few houses in a row have it.
If you can show that, because based on, based on my, just, the street observation, it seemed like there was a very uniform street wall that was set back. The setback on the second floor seemed very uniform along that block front edge, so if you can provide some...
Certainly. It's not the entire block front. There are three or four buildings in a row that do have that, without a doubt, but then the rest of the block does not necessarily have the same setback.
Right, but I think also, what I felt was predominantly there was that very uniform setback. That was my observation. So if you can provide a much more, some, a little bit more clarity on that, that would be helpful.
Gladly.
And to just go back to the height, one of the reasons, in addition to whether or not there are other houses on the social block, that's what we're focusing on.
Right, that was something you had inquired about yesterday, which is why we did the research.
Right, but it's also that apparently, according to the sections and the plans, the attic isn't really being used, so...
Oh, it is planned to be used.
Okay, so it's not clear.
I apologize if there was no label on the attic.
Yeah.
They are planning...
There's a considerable, sort of above what you label as sort of attic, there's, you know, considerable space.
Right.
And I think that's what we're really talking about, in terms of the height.
Considerable space above the attic.
Yeah, you've got, you know, you've got a lot of rafters up there that are pretty deep.
So the question is, is there a way to minimize rafters?
Yeah.
No, is there a...
I will minimize the height.
Well, yeah, well, I'm saying minimize the space above the attic that would therefore impact the height, of course.
You've got like another, you know, six feet of basically dead airspace up there.
Okay, we'll see if there's a way to minimize the space that's above the usable attic that, of course, my client needs.
Yeah, you know, there's a lot of, yeah, dead air. And, you know, in terms of these kinds of discussions that have to do with affecting the massing and all that, if you could bring the architect to the next hearing and clarify...
I'll be glad to. He was actually aware of the fact that at the next hearing, he may very well be needed.
Okay, he's needed.
Just to continue on that theme, in terms of the attic, as I'm looking at the section, there's a section of the attic that's not the usable space, and this is drawing 810.
810 shows you dramatically how much space there is.
And there's a section that's like jutting out, which is really an architectural expression, but really something that is adding to the visual vertical height that it's necessary as a space, so...
I wonder if it's partially because of where the section, I think what he's trying to show you is where the section is taken.
But this is right through the center, and that's where the...
The section isn't taken through the center of the building, that's the problem.
It's not?
No. The section is taken slightly off-center of the building.
Well, then it's even more troublesome that, even if it's on the side, that we have a structure that is so high up on the side.
I think if we showed it through the center of the building, that might alleviate this problem. I will ask him to do that as well.
But the ultimate goal is the massing appears large. There seems to be a way of trimming the massing, so that's, those are kind of the pointers of thick places where the trim, the massing seems to be trimmable.
We'll certainly look at it and see what can be done. I will speak with Mr. Garfinkel about that. And the other statement was regarding the rear yard. I know that was another thing that was brought up. I want to point out to your board that you actually received 19 consent forms on this home. And interestingly enough, as you said, the neighbors, oftentimes you see the neighbors aren't aware of what it's going to look like. The neighbors now have the home behind them, 1182 East 28th Street. They're very familiar with what a special permit looks like and how large it can be. I will point out that house is three feet taller at 38 feet than what's even being proposed here. That home also goes up to a third floor effectively without a slope, because it is a very large dormer that lines up with the rear line at 20 feet. This home does not. But if you were to look, even with that knowledge, all of these pink homes have sent in consent forms to your board. That includes, and I'll pass this up just so you can get a feel for where they are. They're highlighted pink all four segments to your board. It includes the houses to the back, both the one that was enlarged and the one to his left, the house to the right of this one, and the two that front on Avenue L that have a view of the rear yard of this home. So quite a few neighbors have actually supported this. The only immediate neighbor that hasn't did not send in a consent form, they just hadn't seen the neighbor, talked to him and asked him what his feeling was.
The one who is immediately adjacent?
Yes, immediately behind, two homes, both supporting. Immediately to the right, supporting. The two on Avenue L, they can see the rear yard of this home, supporting.
So it's the one right adjacent that's the...
And there are no objection forms that have been filed on this job.
But still...
Inadhesion. Well, that was just something I wanted your board to be aware of, that I know that's always a concern, how do the neighbors feel about it? That's how the neighbors feel about it. The neighbors have seen the plans, they've heard what's happening here, they live next to that other home that's been enlarged, and they're supportive nonetheless. In any event, the other thing that I want to say about that is that the architect, one of the things he did was he did look at that home behind, and he did see how imposing it could potentially be. So what he did was he designed it two stories in height, and then he sloped it back. There are no dormers there. If you look at this building, he did not place any dormers, he sloped it back immediately above the second floor, and that was very intentional, so as to reduce the appearance from the rear. If you look at the side elevations, that is the best place to see that. I know it's hard to see from the rear elevation.
Yeah, not there yet.
Wouldn't you like a page number?
Yeah, that would be great.
Certainly.
88.
It is page 8, thank you, Ms. Sheen.
What is it?
Page 88. You will see the front has a dormer, the rear of this building does not. And it slopes back immediately above the second floor. There is no open area with a parapet, it is just an immediate slope back, no dormer, nothing to increase the massing, it actually reduces the massing by doing that.
All right. So, you know, part of it is also because we don't see the section taken through. So when we look at that section that has that part that's imposing on the, it's always hard to know which is the front, which is the back of these houses.
The one on 810, you said.
Yeah, okay, I'm looking at 810. Okay, so on the right side's the rear, and you see that the master bedroom has this, where the section is taken...
It shows the ceiling of the master bedroom.
Yeah, and then it shows this unusable place in the attic that's above the master bedroom vault, effort of vault, right?
I see what you're looking at.
So it, what it does is it shows you that that whole roof line is unnecessary, because the only thing that's really essential in terms of the design is the vault over the master bedroom, not that strange, I'm not even sure how the guys get in there to do the construction, frankly, section of the roof, which could be then pulled back further or say the design could be modified to adjust that.
I see what you're looking at. We will certainly talk about that. I'll speak with Mr. Garfinkel about that piece.
Okay. And he's worked with us in the past about reducing the apparent massing, so we know we can...
Of course, you'd certainly count on him to look at that. Now that we see exactly where your concerns lie, that they're on that attic level, the space above the master bedroom and the slope of that roof, we can certainly look at that.
Okay, great.
Just to continue on that same, as I had mentioned, I have a little bit of the concern of the setback on the second floor, which is not aligned with at least the abutting properties also. Carrying that all the way to the attic is also of a concern, so having some kind of a setback, that also should be considered. Similar to the way the rear has been done.
We can look at it, see if it is possible.
Yeah, and this case, he normally provides us with an acto, maybe an acto would help so we understand the...
Yeah. This application was filed quite a while ago. As you know, I've taken over for Mr. Garfinkel relatively recently. That's probably why he did not have an acto, is at the time this was filed, it was not typical. But I will ask him to provide one.
Okay. Okay. Any other comments?
Well, just I didn't see the one foot seven inch side yard either in the survey or when I went there. When I looked at the rear yard, it looked like it's about a foot.
It goes back to your comment earlier. We will be checking every dimension on that survey and making sure that the plans correlate perfectly, both the existing, which the proposed were, of course, built off of, and the proposed plans.
Okay. Are there any speakers on this? Okay, so what do you think?
I think Mr. Garfinkel can do this in approximately three weeks.
So, three weeks. That puts us on a May 24 hearing, does that work? For a submission on May 4. That sound right?
Yeah. It's May 1, did you say?
Yeah, May 4 submission for a May 24 continuation.
Probably fine. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Item number, item number two, 18114DC, 679 East 27th Street, Brooklyn.
Good afternoon, Jordan Moes from Sheldon LaBelle on behalf of the applicant. So there were quite a few comments yesterday at the review session. Well, I've tried to do, unless you have a different approach, I tried to sort of package them and to package them together. I reordered things, I try and attack things in a clustered manner. So, if that's okay, so I, what I, was first wanted to talk to you very briefly, well, not briefly about, but to talk about the deference standard with respect to Cornell. And actually, I think I'm going to just quickly draw simple diagrams. And what I think, one of the issues with respect to Cornell is that we've got the zoning, the concept of, in New York City, of a zoning school. But I think what happens in Cornell is that there's this other entity, which is this notion of an educational institution. And I think that there's this bigger circle that they speak to when they speak to the deference that's afforded, and they talk about it very specifically in, in Cornell, when they speak to educational institutions, and then they make note that in that, the particular Cornell case, that it's actually specifically, in that case, addressing schools, or not even schools, but actually universities. Because the zoning definition of school doesn't even include, doesn't include universities or colleges. Under the education law, under that very specific provision in 1210, it doesn't include colleges and universities. So they don't even fall in there, except for the fact that, as I see in cases that I've referred to, or cases that clearly come up at the Board of Standards and Appeals, that where they reference degrees, maybe being a benchmark. But it doesn't, it's not in this notion of zoning school. So I'm concerned somehow that because we're not a zoning school, that we're somehow not entitled to the deference that I think Cornell articulates. And I think in that, specifically in that vein, I've got some other notes here, that there are a number of other types of schools that they speak to. For instance, so I think that, that standard is broadened by a number of cases. And I mention them, and I think the board discussed them yesterday as well, and tried to distinguish them or point out why they didn't, why you didn't think that was necessary directly on point or applicable. But I think what happens is from, when you move from zoning school to this notion of educational institution, and I mentioned things like the Alvin Ailey dance, which is, has an affiliation with Fordham, and that there's a degree associated with another, but clearly that's different from a zoning school. And it's different from just a college or a university, that it's a building in which almost exclusively, is almost exclusively used for dance purposes. Or in the medical building case, where a building used exclusively for medical purposes has an affiliation with a university, and that then becomes an educational institution. I think those are all just examples of differences between, so zoning school, then moving out to, maybe there's another circle here that is universities, and then there are other things that are institutions that are affiliated with universities. And then there are other cases, if you dig back even deeper into the court's discussion of what a school is. And there are, there are cases where, there are cases where this, the courts have characterized a camp as a school, even a ceramic studio in a residential zone as a school...
On your Cornell.
Before Cornell, because they talk about Cornell, and they talk about schools in the context of, just in the context of what a school is, before Cornell. The definition, in fact, the court says that the precise definition of a school for zoning purposes has been addressed by few New York courts. And, but they talk about, a number of different cases is from as early as 1960 all the way up to 2011, talk about schools as an institution that qualifies as being, having adequate physical facilities to conduct its educational function, and a staff qualified to implement its educational objectives. Other definitions include a place where instruction is imparted to the young, any place or means of discipline, improvement, instruction, or training. The union of all elements and organization to furnish education in some branch of learning, the arts, or sciences, or literature.
These are New York cases?
These are New York cases. These are, I'll provide all these to you. And these are all from, working from cases, oh, working back and looking to, back from Cornell, not forward from Cornell, but looking at other examples of where schools have had issues and how the courts have, what the courts have characterized as a school.
But the courts grant deference in those cases?
So in one particular case, from which, which cited those definitions of school, was the case of East Hampton Library, which also has a similar, I think, a vague and more tenuous affiliation, where the library was clearly afforded deference. Now, the library was run by the state university system. But I think that the court very clearly says that that's not why they thought the library had an educational benefit or was entitled to the deference. They say that it's because it's a library, and that it's endowed with presumptions of beneficial use and purposes that underlie the deferential standards applicable to churches, schools, with respect to zoning matters. And that the courts of the state have long recognized and so forth, which goes into, which plays into really, and I think reiterates, and that's a case from 2011, in the, in Supreme Court in Suffolk County. And other, so I think there are a number of cases, though, that, that support that, and that I think that it's important to recognize that educational institutions, and we can, we can modify our sort of brief language that's in this statement of facts, if that's what you'd like, I think, to try and articulate that, or in a separate document. But I think that, I think there's, this isn't, I think what's most important is that, I don't think I'm asking the board to broaden the application of Cornell. I think this is how Cornell reads. It may just be that you haven't been presented with an instance, I think, for instance, the Boys and Girls Club case, I think is not, I think that's a case maybe that falls outside this circle, that they were not an educate, they don't maybe qualify as an educational institution, as much as I think that the Greek school does. And we'll provide more information to you to show that this is a school where people who were children, who once they've passed through seven, eight, or nine grades at the Greek school, speak Greek, and they've passed their certi, they're either certified or they take standardized tests, and they're educated in a rigor, through a rigorous curriculum, and in a way that maybe the Boys and, certainly no disrespect to the importance of the Boys and Girls Club, but in a, in a less of an academic and less of an educational setting than I think that the Greek school presents. And I think that the Greek school then becomes much closer to those other types of institutions or schools or institutions of higher or other learning, that it's much closer to those than, than, than something like the Boys and Girls Club.
So counsel, will you provide a full memo on this issue to the board with, you know, citing the cases?
Of course.
And also pay particular attention to what bona fides, if any, are sort of, to what degree the schools have been accredited, particularly with the board's own cases? So you mentioned Alvin Ailey, and you mentioned medical schools. Those are teaching facilities that have sort of an established connection to an accredited teaching institution, and sort of, you can flesh out for us to the degree that you believe that is relevant, or I guess not relevant. Flesh out where the board precedent falls in that category as well?
Right, I think, and the other case was the, one of the Louis Armstrong Museum, was another institution which is really not, which has, again, an affiliation, and just, I think, both the Alvin Ailey case and the museum case seem to be, that those are buildings that the normal passerby would not have any understanding or recognition of the fact that it was somehow a school or an educational institution.
Well, the passerby is irrelevant, I mean, the board...
Well, I don't know that it's irrelevant.
In those cases, the board examined the program and determined that there was an educational component. Alvin Ailey was a recent case where the board really...
An educational affiliation or connection. And that's fine, but I'm saying...
No, they have degree granting programs inside of the Ailey school.
It's a school.
Right, but not exclusively, that you could go to the Alvin Ailey school and not necessarily be participating in that program.
Not a requirement in any of the, I mean, for instance, a hospital, which has a teaching hospital aspect.
I understand the premise.
Also has surgical suites that, well, this teaching going on in a surgical suite, but there's certainly aspects in a hospital that are not teaching.
That's fine, and I think, which is interesting, because I think there's almost no aspect of the Greek school in which teaching is not happening. It's a building that's almost 100% devoted to teaching, like a, like an elementary school or like a middle school. It's a building that's used almost exclusively for that. Whereas I think that the Alvin, in the Alvin Ailey case or in the museum case, that those buildings or in a hospital situation, and I understand the, I just, I think the point is that it's not such a clear, bright line. And I think that the Greek school is entitled to that deference, because it falls on the side of the, of the educational institution line, as do those cases.
Okay, so...
We'll give you more information with this...
So obviously, this is different than the, all the other cases that we know about that the board has considered, right? And that with Boys and Girls Club, they specifically were called to go look at their unique physical conditions. And we had a recent case with the Settlement House, which went to great lengths to establish their connection to a school, a zoning school, actually, right? Right? So, so you really, you are asking the board to expand its view, because this is not a direct connection to a zoning school or a university, which granted is in a lowercase school, but certainly is an uppercase school, right? Lowercase italic school, it's an institution, an educational institution like Cornell, I mean, effectively Cornell, right?
Right.
So it's not hard to make that...
I understand. I'm not, and I'm not trying, I'm not saying I'm Cornell, and I'm not saying I'm PS82. I'm just saying that I'm also a school, and that I'm a different kind of school, but that doesn't mean, and maybe because you haven't seen that kind of school, doesn't mean I'm...
See...
I think I'm, because I'm not a Settlement House, and I'm not a, I'm not the Boys and Girls Club, I'm a, I'm an educational institution. It's almost hard to, it's almost hard to not admit that. It's, it's, it is a, it's a facility that provides education. It's not from nine o'clock to five o'clock, but it, it's, I mean, there are a lot, there are a lot of people here who can speak to the educational nature of the Greek school of Plato.
Is the school in any way accredited or evaluated or licensed by the state or anything?
We'll, we'll get you, I don't believe we're, I don't think we're licensed by the state per se, but we're, we can speak to that. You want to speak to that right now?
Just briefly...
You have to state your name and...
Yeah, you guys come up, yeah, he knows, he knows.
May I please, the board, my name is Kurt Zanidis, and I'm general counsel to the Greek school of Plato. And the, the school is a non-for-profit institution licensed by the state of New York, by the Department of State, but we also received an educational waiver from the Education Department allowing us to be called a school. The curriculum is a very vigorous curriculum, which in fact, once you graduate, you receive a certificate, some of these kids go on to, to schools in Greece, and that, in and of itself, that diploma allows them to proceed without any testing. Furthermore...
What kind of a certificate is received?
It's a diploma.
Right, but for what?
But diploma in Greek education. So for example, if you have a ninth grader or an eighth grader who has graduated from the Greek school of Plato, they can go into a high school in the, in Greece and continue, and that diploma is recognized by the Greek government. In addition, the children here also take the proficiency exams that are given by the state of New York in the Greek language, so that when they pass those proficiency exams, they do not need to take exams for a language in the high schools in the Board of Ed of the city of New York. So although it's not accredited per se by the Department of Education as a school, under the umbrella of the Department of Education, there is a waiver where the Department of Education has recognized the school as a teaching institution for children from the ages of four or five years old to eighth or ninth grade, is what we, what we, what we do now.
Counsel, will you provide a copy of that, any background information about the waiver?
We'll get that, yes.
Okay.
Sure, thank you.
So we'll, we'll speak to that, but I guess then...
So in terms of your briefing on this whole Cornell doctrine, the, the problem with your last submission was you didn't go into any of the facts on each of those cases, where you're trying to argue that you're similar to, you need to provide us with the facts. It can't be just sort of pick and choose the sentence from the case that works for you. You've got to tell us what the conditions were, how you're distinguished, how you're similar, et cetera. Like you're really doing it for a court where you would never tell the judge only part of the truth.
Yeah, I don't think, I mean, I spoke to the affiliated concepts, I don't think I, I didn't bury those concepts, I think they were in there.
No, actually, there was no mention of the fact that, for example...
That the museum was a...
The hospital had a teaching hospital element in there, or Alvin Ailey was a degree granting program, you didn't mention or, so please mention those words.
Right. So I think that sort of segues then into this notion of uniqueness as a secondary, primary, alternative theory of the case then. And we provided some data, and I know you had some questions, one which was, so of the 233 lots that we looked at in that specific area, and we said that we're about in the top 11%, there are about 25 lots that were at least as shallower, shallower, so we ranked 25th. And you said, I think... And you said, I think, are they all coming in for a variance? That's like, that maybe is a lot of lots, or a fair number of lots. And I think, so we looked a little, we looked a little harder, and there is a, there are some notable distinctions. First, we're the only, they're all residential properties. So all of those 24 other lots, I believe, are all residential properties, and they're all-
When you say residential properties, they're being used as residential, because they're all zoned for residential.
Used as residential and zoned for residential.
Right.
They're all either in the R5B or the R4B. The blocks, there's an R5B district that sort of winds around-
Right, but nothing prevents these residential buildings having a community facility use, which is a permitted use.
Correct. But let, I didn't, give me a chance to finish, I think, is that, that, I think they're, they're over, almost all of them are overbuilt. So they're almost all overbuilt, and they're all mostly old buildings, in the R4B and the R5B, which have FARs of, I think, .9 in the R4B, and 1.35 in the R5B, and they're almost all over, overbuilt. Residential, overbuilt, and I think makes, is distinguished from ours, I just want to make sure. Oh, maybe, yeah, yes, that, we're the only community, we're the only non-residential building, and we're the only underbuilt community facility residential, uh, non-residential building. With a maximum FAR of 2.0, this is a building that has a FAR of less than one right now.
Right, but you're going to tear this building down.
Right, but I'm just trying to distinguish that this site is different from all the other sites, that it is arguably, it's arguably the softest site in the neighborhood, that overbuilt residential buildings are much less likely to be targets for redevelopment than a, than a underbuilt community facility build. So I think it's different. I think that's, I think it's different. It makes them much less likely to be redeveloped. There's been very little-
No, so actually, they're not usually redeveloped, they're expanded, where the owner comes in and says, "I have a unique lot, and I need more floor area on my lot because my house is too small."
For, for a little-
For being a house, for example.
For a little brick house on a lot that's 60 feet deep, I think these are not properties that are going to be attractive to community facility uses. They're well-suited for small residential uses, but not well-suited for, when you go down Battery Avenue, there's a strange group of lots that form an unusual triangle, you can see it on the map, that is, their, their houses are sort of aligned horizontally and parallel to the street, they're, they don't lend themselves well to any other use other than residential. So I guess, I would take issue that, I don't think this site is well-suited for a community facility. It's got a building that had foundations in the ground that was a community facility building, and is underbuilt, and is next to a community facility building, and is next to an enormous educational institution to the, to the east. All those other lots are smaller buildings, smaller lots, with residential uses that are over, that are overbuilt. I think they're not, those are very poor candidates for, and I think is probably evidenced by the fact that it hasn't happened, that since, there's been very little development or teardown activity or enlargement activity on those sites since 1961. So I think we're, we're much more unique than all those other, all those other 25 properties. And then when you look at post 60, I guess only looking at post 61 lots, excluding the lots that, what do we do? After excluding all of the pre-61 lots, there are only 42 lots that were developed post-61. And we're, we're the number two shallowest lot in that classification, so that there were vacant lots or redevelopments in the area that very few have even been redeveloped since 1961, and of those, we're the, almost the shallowest of all of those. So I think the property is different from other properties in the area. And then I think, I know that the board is not necessarily a fan of the locational issues, but I think that the notion that we're also, that we are situated between a community facility building and the Poly Prep campus also don't necessarily mitigate anything, but lend itself very well to an additional community facility building at this location.
But that could also be a medical office, right? So-
It could be.
Whatever.
Right, I mean, it was, I mean, that's-
But that could also be the case across the street, right? Or on both sides across the street. I mean, according to that, all of those ones that you've got in red, that are within, across the street of you are also well-suited locationally for community facility.
Right, except that I'm a, I'm a building that had a community facility use and community facility foundations in a location that are usable, usable, and those buildings are not. Most of those buildings, because as of the 233, most of those buildings predate 1961, most of them are very old houses that don't lend itself, don't lend themselves nearly as well to a doctor's office as does my site, or a school, or another community facility.
Okay, well, if you could elaborate in writing, to the extent you can on this.
Right, and I think the, the notion that, that, I think that these two concepts, so there's this concept of some of this uniqueness here, and the concept of the deference, to whatever extent we establish deference, I think those two things create a combined, a combined valid A finding.
Deference is not like you're kind of deferred, sort of deferred, it's either you're, there's deference or there isn't deference, right?
Well, but the board has actually spoken sometimes in terms of that there's, that in light of the deference standard and the unique conditions that we see at the property.
Ah, but that's when the board also finds unique conditions, so, right? So it's not that the aggregate of kind of a little bit of deference plus a little bit of unique-
I'm not looking for a little bit of deference, but yes, I understand what you're saying.
Plus a little bit of unique makes the, makes the A finding. It's that you have the A, you have deference, and on top of it, the board often finds, because it's the coincidence of the site, that there's something about the site that's actually unique, like a, whatever, difficult soil conditions, or a very odd shape, or something like that, right?
I understand.
That, that leads directly to the difficulty.
So, I guess we could turn, I would turn to the building.
Mm-hmm.
And the, and the need of the facility. So we provided a table, which is maybe a complicated set of tables, argue, the programmatic needs assessment table.
So hard to understand.
Yeah, well, let me try and make it easier. Maybe it's easier, sometimes when you create it, it's too close. So when you look at the second, there's two, there are really two primary tables here. There's a present need comparison, and there's a future needs comparison. And when-
Where are you, what page are you on?
So I'm on, and so it's this supplemental piece called the programmatic needs assessment, it's not in the statement of facts, it's a-
Right.
Separate thing, although, yeah. And the last two pages, there are four tables.
Okay.
So there's, they look like this, right? Got the red bars running across it. The table on the left in, on both pages is the, is the as-of-right building, and the table on the right on both pages is the proposed building. And what the, in the most simple, just eyeballing it very quickly way, what the, the as-of-right building is trying, is illustrating is that there's a shortage of seats and classrooms in the as-of-right context, based on present, present need for the Greek school and projected, projected, just a several years out need for the Greek school. So, and the reason there are no red, red bars on the other side is because there's, there isn't a shortfall in the proposed context presently or in the future. Sorry, yeah, I thought you had a question. So that's what, that's what's happening. Now, I know there was some-
Tell us what, how to read, I don't know how to read this thing.
Okay, well, so there are-
It says 1.1.
Those are room numbers, it says room number at the top of that column.
But we don't know where 1.1 is because the rooms aren't labeled on the drawing.
So that's the first floor, room one and two, and then the second floor, and then the third floor.
Okay, so the rooms need to be labeled on the drawings so we can follow along-
Right.
Bouncing ball kind of thing, right. All right, so what does it tell us?
So it tells you that there's, there's a room capacity-
Of six.
No, 20.
No, of 20, of 20.
Right, so there's a, there are room, the second, the second column is the building code room capacity, and then the, the, the days of the week are how the room is utilized, how the room could be utilized in that scenario. The problem is in the as-of-
How?
It would have 18 students, or it would have 10 students, or 16 students.
No, it says, for instance, 1.1 has six students in it on Monday, Wednesday, and Saturday.
That's future.
Right, in the future, right.
In the future.
That's in the proposed future.
But when, from the hours of what to what?
Well, the school operates, so the school operates between, the, the primary operation of the school is from 3:45 to 5:45.
So the building is empty all the time except for 3:45 to 5:45?
Parts of the building are, right, parts of the, much of the building is empty during portions of the day. There's a, there'd be a UPK program that would operate on the first floor during, from nine to three o'clock, and there would be a nursery program that would operate on, also during the day, in maybe one or two locations on the second floor, but the balance of the building is not utilized until, right, until three four, until 3:45 in the afternoon.
So there's no way for us to tell this from any, from this data? We could sort of figure it out by reading some other stuff?
I mean, it's all in my, my papers discuss how this facility operates.
No, but so, so here's how we're used to doing these so that we can really understand if there's vacancies in the rooms that are, like, where the rooms are, seem to be redundant, right?
Right.
It's a, it's a chart where all the blocks of time are shown from whatever time a school opens, if it's an eight o'clock drop off for the kids, whatever, right? And so from eight o'clock in the morning all the way till closing time, say eight o'clock at night, the, every classroom is listed, every block of time is listed, so classrooms across the top, and it's for every day of the week, so that we can see how many, how many classrooms are fully occupied when, and which classes are not fully occupied. That's how we can determine whether there's redundancy.
Okay.
Because it, we can't tell-
Yeah, there isn't redundancy, there are rooms that aren't used, it's a-
Well, that's, that's redundancy.
That's not, no, but then, we, because we don't have a need, there are children are in a different school during that time, it's not-
No, it means that you could be using, and I've thought also there are adult programs in this school, in this building.
Right, we speak to that.
Well, we, go ahead.
Oh, like on your highest demand day, which is Saturday?
Sure.
You know, you have a total number of seats required of 146, this is in your future scenario, and your capacity is like over three, is like 340, and you have like five rooms where you're either not using the room-
No, we're using-
Or sending students.
X, X means that they split the classes.
Right, so 10, five, if there's 10 in a certain grade, there's five here and five there.
That might be, that might be.
So, I mean, it's just like, these rooms are so overcapacity.
Well, they're, it's hard to predict exactly how you're going to break up a room, so if you have a room, if you have a class that's 15 people, and maybe five people need to go to the other room, it's hard to create rooms that are designed for five people. And these are not big rooms, these are still relatively small rooms.
Well, you could make smaller class, smaller rooms.
They're very, they're already fairly small rooms.
But you partition the rooms, you could have partitions available, because-
There could be partitions.
And you can also, look, I don't, I'm not saying that I know a lot about programming and creating a program, but it seems to me that you're saying two things. You're saying, one, that you're having, each grade has a different, has attained a different level of Greek proficiency, right?
Exactly, right.
So you want to break them up by grade.
Sure.
But then you're also saying in the second sentence that within one grade, you will have more advanced students and less advanced students. So the question is, do you really need to break them up by grade, and then also within the grade by ability, when you could just break them up by ability?
Well-
And you can have-
That probably goes to the-
Greek one for ages five to 10, and, you know, Greek two for ages five to 10.
I'm sure they can, I'm sure the school could speak to the, the curriculum program and how, why, but I understand that.
But, because it just seems to me like you have a lot of large rooms that you're not partitioning, because you're saying you can't really predict what you're going to have in each class day by day, and you may end up having a lot of classrooms that sit empty.
Yeah, it seems that way, very much so.
And so you're building this huge building, you know, to hold-
Not a huge building.
Well, I mean-
It's a very large building.
It's a large building, and it's underutilized. So, yeah, it's large. Otherwise, it wouldn't be here. And aside from Saturday, aside from Saturday, if you look at the other days of the week, your rooms are really underutilized.
Yeah.
Like eight instead of 22.
Well, they're not that, well-
You have a classroom of 10 students, which you're going to split with another room? I mean, five per room, where the capacity is like 50 seats? I mean, it's just-
There's no capacity of-
But if you put the two rooms together, they're close to?
Yeah.
Yeah, so these are building department, first of all, maximum capacities. I think practically speaking, when these rooms get filled up with classrooms and desks and, with, with desks rather, and whatever else it takes to make a classroom work, when you look at the size of these rooms and you see that, you're talking about rooms that are 16 by 19, these are not enormous rooms by even elementary school standards.
But they're our standards, you know, whatever.
Well, they're, they're rooms, they're rooms, and they have a, they have a maximum capacity code count, but I think realistically speaking, they wind up not, maybe we'll di, we can diagram a room for you and show you-
You're estimating 20 square feet per student. Now, if that's the standard for a school desk, that's, that's pretty liberal.
And especially if you only have six people in the room, it's not, you know-
Yeah, sure.
-that bad. I, I think, for me, the chart sort of brings up and highlights the fact that you have rooms that are going to go begging during, you know, these two hours, or, you know, whatever the hours of the, of the day are, and it, it doesn't seem that they have to. If you don't have something scheduled for them, then you may not really need the room, you may be able to, you know, get rid of one room or two rooms because you never have it scheduled. So I think you kind of have to look at this a little more closely and, and figure out, you know, exactly how kids move through the day, move through those two hours, and try to tighten it up, because it, it looks to me you've got like a lot of holes here, so.
And then that speaks to the waivers that you're requesting. So for example, I know the community board persuaded you to set back on the fourth floor at the rear, right?
Right.
So it's got, it complies with the rear yard require, well, it doesn't comply, but anyway, it has a rear yard sort of at the rear on that-
Fourth floor, right.
So to the same point, you have a classroom on the third floor that is larger, and given what we're seeing in capacity and need and so on, that could also easily be cut back. So then why impose such a really large structure on that residential, the residential property to the rear? I mean, it's different when you're up against the medical facility, or up against all that open space from the adjacent school, but that's not, right?
Yeah, sure.
And then the other part of it is, let's say even if you were able to establish to our satisfaction that the shallow lot is presenting your unique physical condition, then classically, shallow lot sort of waivers, or let's say waivers that allow you to overcome your difficulties are then the relaxation of yard regulations, right?
I understand, I, I-
They're not the relaxation of floor area. Floor area is when something else is going on that prevents you from, say, using the cellar, or, or something else like that, right? Where you do have a cellar in this case.
Or when program dictates so. I think that there are many instances of-
Yeah, but that's, that's program, that's program when we're kind of agreeing on deference, but it's also, yeah, sometimes it can be program, but at this point, I'm not seeing program, right? So.
I, I also wanted to say, as, just in reference to your table, your table is talking about seat demand, and then when you jump down to your totals, it would be very helpful to carry the total available seats on every given day so we could have a ratio of usage.
Okay.
Because you're jumping, the classrooms used, but you really should be jumping to total seats. If a hundred and seventy-five seats are provided on day, on Monday, and only a hundred and twenty-two are used, what's the usage, the ratio? Then on Tuesday, if a hundred and seventy-five are provided, but only fifty-
You mean the ratio between used and unused, you mean?
No, between used and total. Used seats out of total seats.
Oh, okay, you go total seats, total seats, I see, okay.
Right, so you're saying a hundred and twenty-two are demanded, but, but out of what?
How many?
Okay. But I think we're gonna give you a different table from what it sounds like. Yeah, yes.
Well, isn't there a capacity of like three hundred and forty seats in this building?
I think when, if, a maximum capacity of, if there was simultaneous use of the building.
Right, well, that's the capacity of the students.
No, and if the auditorium was being used at the same-
Just a second, excuse me, sir, you'll get to speak, but first they're gonna make their presentation. Sure, go ahead.
Hi, my name is Spiro Girolanos, I'm the building committee chairman and a board of directors. I'm a member of the board of directors of the Greek School of Plato. So I just wanted to speak a little bit about the confusion, seems to be about what our needs are presently and in the future. I'm hoping to kind of clarify it, explain some of the issues we deal with as a school on a regular basis, and why these classrooms, the quantity of classrooms and the size of classrooms are important to us. So I kind of agree that the table is very confusing, and I will work with Jordan to clean it up. But right now, presently, so presently, what we're, what we're trying to get is sixteen classrooms in the current plan. But ideally, we need twenty. And the reason why I say that is, so I want to talk about the quantity and then the size. What we found is that as, as a children, as a Greek American children, starting to become second generation and third generation kids, there seems to be a difference in their level, a difference in their ability to speak Greek or learn Greek. And so we also have the issue where certain grades, the younger grades especially, we have a lot more students, in the older grades, we have less students. And so what's happening is either we have too many students and we have to break the class up for efficiency purposes because it's not great for a teacher to be teaching thirty kids. It's much more beneficial to the students to get one teacher per twenty kids. And that's kind of an ideal staff to student ratio for us. But also, as the kids get older, we find that there's a bigger difference in their ability to, to learn Greek and speak Greek. So in that, in that case, when we have smaller classroom size, we still need two classrooms because there'll be a teacher speaking more basic Greek to them, and a teacher helping with the kids that are more advanced. So we find that in almost every grade level, it's advantageous to us to have two classrooms. And so therefore, ideally, twenty classrooms for us would be the perfect scenario from here going forward.
Are you saying you have twenty students in each level of the grade?
No, I'm saying that that would be for financial reasons and also for academic reasons. That would be the ideal scenario. I'm not saying that we are so hopeful that that's what's gonna happen, that's most likely not the case. But there are gonna be some classes that are twenty kids, and there are gonna be some classes that are twelve kids, okay? And so for us to create a mix of classrooms is, I think what we try to do here, we have classroom sizes. I think start at twelve and go up to like twenty-three, based on, you know, the zoning, twenty square feet per kid, I think it is. So again, you're never, in a perfect world, you'll fill that classroom. You'll have twelve kids in each classroom that has a capacity of twelve, and twenty-three kids in a classroom that has a capacity of twenty-three. But think about how unlikely that is and how difficult that is. At every given moment, you don't know how many kids you're gonna be in your first grade, or how many kids are gonna be in your fifth grade, and you do the best you can to shift them all around and try to maximize, you know, the space. But it's almost, it's almost impossible to get maximum usage, if you think about it on that term, and in those terms. So that's the capacity, but it's, we're never gonna, we gotta be realistic, we're never gonna reach the capacity in every single class. It's very unlikely.
Is that what you're describing from an architectural perspective? Is the need for a large room with multiple partitions? And that you, based on your semester and your, your, your analysis of the entering students and whatever, you must do a little exam or something for them to enter, and then you divide the rooms up accordingly. And what's making this hard for us to understand or kind of believe is that you've got these fixed rooms, and the rooms are not malleable. So they're fifteen-person rooms, and arguably you could fit more in there actually, because that's twenty square feet per kid. And I don't even know if you need that much per kid seated, right? So then what you really are talking about is that the partition should move so that you can accommodate the class that only has eight kids, and the other class that has twenty kids, or something like that.
That, that'd be great, in, in theory, that sounds good, but in practice, it's very difficult because you have sound issues, you have just-
They're called soundproofers.
They're soundproofers.
And you, you just have the level of effort to do these things every year to move them. I thought that by creating a situation where we had classrooms anywhere from twelve kids to twenty-three kids, that's what that allows us to do. So we can say, okay, you know, we have a second grade that only has twelve kids this year, a second grade there. We have a sixth grade that has twenty-three class, uh, students, a classroom we can put there. Gives us the ability to kind of do that. It's very difficult.
Then you have the ninth graders on the same floor as the first graders?
Maybe not on the first graders, but maybe on the fifth or sixth graders. I mean, the way we have it pictured now, we have a first, second, and third grades on the second, the fourth, fifth, and sixth on the third, and seventh, eighth, and ninth on the top. And if we have to move them around a little bit, we can. Obviously, we don't wanna put a ninth grader down the floor with a first grader. But there, if you look on each floor, there is the ability for a twelve, thirteen, or a twenty, fifteen, or sixteen. So, you know, all I'm trying to say is that we're never gonna be able to fill the building to capacity because of logistic, logistically, you never know how many kids are gonna enter the school building. And we do wanna have the ability to hopefully grow in the future. I mean, the projection here, it's a three-year projection, but ten years from now, who knows what's gonna happen? We wanna be able to grow, you know, a little bit incrementally every year, and it's just good for the school to do that. And, and I think that's one of the reasons why this chart's a little confusing. It's, it's a three-year projection. You know, it's, it's, obviously, it may grow a little more past that. But we just need to have the flexibility to move grades around. And again, I just wanna point out the fact that, you know, these kids these days, one of the problems we're having is they're over-scheduled. They're, they're in Boy Scouts, they're in all these after-school activities, they're in sports, they're, you know, the, the elementary school, the public school system is very demanding. They have ELAs, they have state tests as they get older. And we compete with a lot of these after-school programs. And we need to have a little bit of flexibility. And this school building, although it doesn't provide us with the twenty classrooms, which would be ideal for us, it would be, it truly would be ideal for us, it gives us the ability to be a little bit flexible with our afternoon program and also shift classrooms around as we need to do so. And also split classrooms when we need to do, because we're finding we need to do that more and more often. Because either the size of the lower grades being too large, or the upper grades having this difference in their levels.
But you, you keep saying too large, but you have not given us anything that shows that even in your projections, that your grades are too large. And so that's, that's a problem. Because what I'm seeing is, based on your current need, you're not even close to being half-occupying this building, not even close.
Correct.
And then with your projection, one can argue that you're at, your three-year projection, I guess you're at maybe half-occupied. And because you're asking for space and waivers in terms of setbacks and yards, you're burdening your neighbors for something that doesn't, based on what you're showing me, doesn't even look like it's needed or required at this point in time. So for you to say that, well, we have, we're finding we're having to split grades up because it's, the grade is too large for the classroom, then at least you need to show me on the chart that you have a, a twenty-capacity room. And, you know, instead of having pre-K just in one room, in room one point one at twenty every day, or three of those days should say twenty, 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 and then one point two should also say pre-K because you've had to split it off, and maybe that has fifteen, 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 because you have too many pre-K students for one classroom. But you're not showing us that, that. In addition to which, the pre-K program is very specific about how many children are allowed in a room, so it's actually not twenty. So, so then like, let's say, third grade, or, you know, something like that. But, but you're, you're, you're so far under capacity, even in your three-year projections, it's just, it's not a very convincing argument.
It's possible that we, we may need, maybe the three year is just too soon out, and that's why. So maybe we'll look at that again, and maybe provide you with maybe a six-year or something like that.
Well.
I think, I think that was one of the-
Our, our standard is five. We can't project out, you know, the twenty years when you might have more people, right? So.
Okay. So I, I hope I just clarified a little bit on what our needs are as a school, and some of the difficulties that we face in today's, you know, second, third-generation kids with this over, over-scheduled schedule.
So I don't understand how the over-scheduling fits in here. So what, over-scheduling says to me, they're enrolled in Greek school, they don't really, they'd really much rather do soccer practice, so they're not even coming to class. So that just speaks to an empty classroom.
I'll tell you, over-schedule means that today we have a Greek dance class on this particular time, this particular day of the week, and then the Boy Scouts decide to move their schedule to that time. And now we lose half the kids to the Boy Scouts or something.
Well, but that's what I'm talking about, too.
Right, that's exactly right.
An empty school.
Right, no, so what happens is-
Because other activities went out.
No, no, but, but then what, what Spiro's gonna say?
What, what I'm saying is that we have to have the ability to move it to a different time. And when we have limited classroom space, it's already being utilized by something else, it's very difficult for us to do that. Do you understand what I mean? It's like, we need a little bit of flexibility. Sometimes, you know, you'll see that when we put this table together of hours that you're requesting, which I think makes a lot of sense, you know, you're gonna find that we use more specific times during the day, we use the classes. But we use some of the classes, and then we have the ability, if something needs to be shifted over, to use those classes on a different day.
Wait a second, aren't you saying, well, I'll just finish this. I thought it's an after-school program, three forty-five to five forty-five. So what you're doing is you're saying, what I understood was that all the grades, with the exception of the little, little kids, are coming there from the, for the same block of time. So you're saying you need more flexibility than that block of time? You have your flexibility.
So when we have a, when we have a larger building with more hours in the day, and we have, like, for instance, on Monday, Wednesday, or Tuesday, Thursday, we have less classes on those days, right? So during that day, if we only had enough classrooms for those classes, let's call it four or five classes, and we needed to shift something else on that day, we wouldn't be able to, we wouldn't have a classroom. So having more classrooms in even different times as well, because sometimes we have a dance program that can happen after five forty-five, or it can happen on Saturdays after one fifteen. When we have our theater program, or when we have our band, we, that's another thing I didn't speak about. We have a theater program, we have a, a band program. I mean, we just, we just had the Greek Independence Day Parade, and our, our band had the honor of opening up the parade, the Independence Day Parade. We take a lot of pride in that, we work very hard at it, we have a very large band. And, you know, we need time for that, practice. And we need rooms, and we need classrooms. And we can't have classrooms next to classrooms that are teaching, because at that time, if you're hitting a drum, it's gonna disrupt the kid who's, there's a lot of little things like that, that I guess, knowing the school is, is, you know, getting into the details. But you can't have the drum being hit on the second floor next to second-grade classes being taught, you know, right next to them. So you have to split them up, you gotta maybe put them on the fourth floor and have the class happening on the second floor.
I thought that's what the auditorium was.
And that helps us, that's the flexibility we kind of need.
Put them in the center.
I, I, I guess the auditorium was part of these.
No, I mean, you can use the auditorium for that. The auditorium is when the whole band practices together. Because what happens is, again, you have different levels of, you have the drum, you have the cymbal, you have the trumpet. If you, if they're all practicing in the same room at the same time-
Do section rehearsals, and then you put them all together.
Exactly, exactly. Same thing with our theater program.
I was in bands.
Thank you. Same thing with our theater program. We have different scenes. We have sixty kids sitting and waiting for one, the, the main role to, to finish their three hours' worth of lines. Everybody else is sitting there like this, bored. So what we do, we split them up in different classes, and different floors, with different teachers, so that they can practice their roles. So we can, we can be efficient, because the kids are over-scheduled. And it's very, very hard to get them to come unless they come in, they do what they gotta do, and they go. And we need that flexibility.
Okay, well. I also have another question, just, when are the adult classes held? Yeah.
So right now, we don't have adult classes. We've had a, a demand for it, we've had a lot of people talk about it, we just don't have the space for it. And so, you know, adult classes, again, that's something we can be very flexible with. That's something I think we could do possibly during the weekdays. You know, it, it depends on how the parent schedules work out. They might wanna drop off the kids and come in and do it, although I doubt it, because typically they drop off the kids and leave, they come back later, they do their shopping, they do whatever they gotta do. We have to see what the, we haven't, we haven't had the resources yet, the, the space yet to even approach it. We just know that there's big interest.
But don't you have a school right now off somewhere else? And where those classrooms sit empty during the day?
So here's how we operate right now, this is, I think, important. We rent an office, which is strictly an office. The basement is our storage base. We have our band equipment there, we have certain other things there that we need. We have traditional Greek costumes that we have during our dance, for our dance program. We rent space from Lutheran, Lutheran Elementary School, which is where we go for our actual classrooms. We still don't have enough storage space.
It's a school, I mean, it's a-
It's a, yeah.
It's a functioning school during the day, I mean-
And then we use the space in the afternoon, but we pay rent for it. We pay rent for the office, we pay rent for that. We also don't have enough space for storage. So like, if we need a projector for class, for instance, right? We have to, teachers have to carry projectors from the office to the school building and set them up. These are some of the hardships that we deal with, with not having our own building. Then we also have props from our theater, which we have no space in the basement for. So different board members volunteer their basements, you know, or their, their businesses' storage facilities in order to store the props for our plays and our shows. We do Ancient Greek Tragedy every other year, and we teach that as well. So we're all over the place. It's very, it's very hard for us to operate renting space.
Okay, but to the point.
Yes, I'm sorry.
The place where you have your classrooms.
Yes.
The classrooms are not available to you during the day.
Yes.
Correct.
They are not available to us during the day. And even, even their closets are not available, even their walls are not available to us. Because they have a regular school during the day. Kids can't hang up their, their paintings, or their artwork, or their, you know, whatever essays they wrote in Greek. They can't show their parents when they come in, you know what I mean? We, we just need a physical space to be able to showcase the kids. It, it helps us thrive, it helps us, it helps the kids do better, it helps us, it helps them be interested in, in something they're, I'll be honest with you. The younger kids are interested, but the older kids, they, they don't wanna be there. They wanna be, somebody said it before, they'd rather be in soccer practice. But their parents feel it's important, and then eventually they grow up and they become alumni, and like me, they come back to the school and they volunteer, because they, those are the happiest years of their life, they just didn't know it then.
Do you get adult kids who have participated in this to admit that?
But believe it or not, we have a lot of volunteers that come back at eighteen, nineteen, twenty years old. They're still, they're still marching with us, parade, band, opening up the parade, still performing, you know, in the theater. They're still coming back and volunteering to help out on, with the board of directors or the PTO. By the way, we spoke earlier about education. I mean, our bylaws are strictly that, they're, they're the school board of directors, volunteer parents, that, some of them are alumni, some aren't. It's a PTO, parent-teacher organization, and it's an educational program. I mean, that's, those are the three governing bodies of our school. We are strictly, strictly an educational facility. You know, we, we have, we're recognized by the, by the Greek Ministry of Education. We are, Greek consulate in New York recognizes us, and we've been around for forty years. And that's all we do, is educate kids. By the way, a lot of the kids are not a hundred percent Greek, some of the kids come from mixed marriages. And, and they, a lot of them speak better Greek than some of the kids that come from all Greek background. Board of directors, I mean, this is an interesting organization. It's a nonprofit that you can become a member of, you can sit on the board of directors. Nobody owns the school, nobody owns the school. The, the board of directors just volunteers, and it's the publics. I mean, you can come and be on the board, vote it in, that's it, pay fifty-dollar dues, and that's it. There's no, you know, there's, anybody and everybody is welcome to join this school, Greek or non-Greek, and strictly for educational purposes. I hope I touched upon that a little bit. I don't understand the whole legal stuff behind it. Is there anything else I can answer?
Any other questions?
You're going to school?
I think that-
Sorry? Can I? Yeah, yeah, go ahead.
I think what you explained was helpful. But one other question I would like to ask is, when you say you want some element of extra space for these overrun classes, can you, like, based on what you have in operation, can you do like a rough estimate of what typically you'd need under the current operation, which can be factored into the future need to kind of say, okay, this is what we would need, based on what you have these overruns under the current program?
I understand correctly, you're saying what would we need in the future?
Based on the current overrun situations that you have, identify what is the current overrun, how many such situations are at...
I will have it short, right?
Right, and, right, and how that, I, I don't think that's been adequately addressed. And, and, and if that can help us understand this chart, that, that would be good.
Okay.
Well, this chart, maybe I'm misunderstanding, I don't understand this chart.
Yeah, I don't understand this chart, but whatever new chart you're going to...
Yeah. Because you have this as-of-right present need chart, but, right? I think that's the as-of-right building as opposed to what you've got, where you're renting space and you're doing this stuff.
Where we are today is not on this.
Right, so that, it would help us if maybe that's, that's your baseline, because that is what helps you to go shopping, you know? Look at where our present needed, our present conditions are, let's project out our five years, what should we shop for when we're looking for a piece of property? Right? That's what informed you when you started?
Okay, okay. And I, I just wanna point out also that Saturday is our main use, although not our only use, it's our biggest problem, because that's where we have most of the kids coming from all grades. And, you know, that's when the building is typically, you know, overutilized or fully used. And so the flexibility that we're looking for is during the week to help enhance some of these programs that we already have that are kind of, I don't wanna say struggling, but difficult, difficult to run under the current conditions.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. So, we did need an answer about whether the UPK classrooms are allowed to double function?
When they're not being, you mean, gonna use it when it's not...
Right, we, yeah, like on Saturday, for example. We don't know the answer to that, someone needs to check what the regulations are.
And also, isn't there a limit?
Yeah, I was gonna say, isn't there a limit, but also, is the Greek school operating the PK program, or is it another entity?
I think we, I think the plan is that the Greek school will operate it. Do you wanna speak to that? Yeah?
Yeah, no, it would be under the...
You have to come and introduce yourself.
Sorry, Kurt Sinidis again. No, it would be under the Greek School of Plato entity that would run the universal pre-K, if and when we meet all the requirements. And just one, one point I'd like to also make about the, the usage, and this was a perfect example, when we had the parade last week, and the children are also putting on a play next month. Saturday, for example, where the building is used, or the rooms are used, the most is on a Saturday. We also needed space so that kids came in to play and prepare for the parade, other kids were doing their theater, you know, play practice, other children were dealing with tutoring, because some of the kids are so far behind that we do, you know, tutoring as well. So, we will do our best to give you the, the information that you require to show that, you know, the flexibility is what makes the program. And, and, and for the last 40 years, unfortunately, the school has been almost like a nomad, because it had its various, you know, it was operating out of various locations, and it was very difficult for the kids to know that they have a school of their own to call home. Thank you.
So we, we did have more questions, did you wanna go through those?
Yeah, that's fine, right. And I, we discussed in the statement of fact, in the statement of facts and findings, there is some discussion of the, certainly the history of the school and how it, how it functions today, but we'll, we'll create a new set of tables that explain current usage and compare with, I guess, as-of-right as well as a five-year projected also. Right, now, I know there were a number of other things, certainly. So with respect to the building, there were some questions with respect to whether the building could be spread into the side yards. And I think we, we do briefly discuss it, I think, in page six and page eight, where what we're trying to do here, and we think it presents a significant cost savings, is use existing foundations and footings. And while you correctly point out that, and I think we point out that, we do plan to lower the cellar slab a little bit, it's being lowered specifically to align with the bottom of the existing footings and foundation, and that we're trying not to go below that to create new needs for shoring and underpinning.
Isn't it really currently a basement and you have to lower it?
I think, I think that's, I think it's incidental to it, I mean, we are cognizant of trying to lower the building, so it happens, it happens to becoming...
But you have to, otherwise it's flooring.
Otherwise it's flooring. So I think it, it does become, it serves a couple of purposes.
But one of your, your issues is that you're, you're devoting significant space inboard of your existing foundations to circulation. So you've got, you know, two staircases and, and your elevator. And it occurs to me that, you know, with, I guess, what I would consider a minimal amount of expense, would be to put your staircases outboard of your existing foundation. And that way, you free up, I think, a significant amount of space inside your, you know, the current configuration. You might be able to derive, you know, another classroom on a lower floor by doing that. So...
So this would, you mean like in a non, a non-structural sort of appendage then to the building, the stair, that's what the stair...
Sort of like two wings in your side yard, and then, then you have all of the building to actually put stuff in, right? So, you know, you might consider taking a look at sort of getting rid of a lot of your circulation, getting that outside of, of your current box, and then devoting more space inside the current box to program, thereby lowering the building. And you also might wanna take a look at the cellar, which has, I, what I would consider a lot of space that you might wanna like devote to like band, which is like on the fourth floor. You could actually divvy up, you know, significant space in there to accommodate that. That would get rid of your fourth floor altogether. So, just my observations.
Well, and to that point, like, you have this large laundry room, what was that?
I think it's a storage room as well.
Says laundry, says laundry storage.
Right, which we've alluded to though as a, I mean, there's not, there is almost no storage in this building at all, like, and Spiro spoke to...
Yeah, but you're also asking for a vault under the...
Right, and I don't think we can approve anything off the zoning law, so I don't know.
We've had discussions, and I believe there are some preliminary approvals already from, for a partial vault possibly, from involving, I guess, the Department of Transportation with respect to that.
And it must involve the Department of Parks, because you've got that note.
And Parks.
And it would eliminate any trees in front of the site.
Right, so...
Which, you know...
Well, I think it would be, there would be a significant tree exchange then, it'd have to be the...
There's large trees there, I think.
I think there's one tree, I think.
The tree, the roots are probably well within the 14-foot sidewalk.
Right.
Which maybe if you've gotten a partial, you know, acceptance from DOT on a portion of your vault, it could be because they don't wanna disturb a tree. So your vault can be smaller than it's showing.
I think we have an approval from, I think, or at least a tentative approval, I believe, from Parks as well.
You have a tentative approval from DOT?
Well, I'll get you, if you want, wanna speak to it?
We, we have a tentative approval from DOT, subject to Park's review. Parks had asked us to go to DOT first.
And what are you gonna use, though, that space for?
But that's what we were talking about earlier, about the band equipment, props for theater productions, dance costumes, and, I mean, we, we, presently, we're all over the place trying to house all this stuff that we can't store in our facilities.
This vault is on their property, it's not gonna set back. No, so wait a minute, so this vault, though, is on your property, it's just within...
Right.
No, it's not within their property, it's on the, under the city sidewalk.
It's under the sidewalk, I'm not seeing, it says gross area line of vault.
The laundry and storage comes to their front property line, and then beside, in front of that is a sidewalk vault, which goes 14 feet under the city sidewalk.
If you look at the cellar plan, they've...
So let me just clarify...
It's not shown on the site plan.
Not on the site plan, but on the cellar plan it is.
Yeah, but your site plan should say, it says wrap area line of vault.
What we, what we could do is, in the next submission, we could show what DOT has temporarily approved, subject to Park, so you...
Let me just, if I could just explain, again, it's Jordan, it's again, it had, it had originally been the vision to have a full vault. Then it came off the plans, because I think we felt that it wasn't going to happen. But now it appears that there may be an opportunity to try and create a partial vault. So the plans don't reflect that, they've never reflected, in fact, that partial scenario. So we'll get that clarified and have it accurately, accurately reflected on cellar plans and the sections. It may still be on one of the sections.
It's on the elevations, you see it.
On the elevation, okay.
And it's a significant expense, which kind of, you question, well, why can't you go into the side yards?
Well, we'll look at that.
You're gonna do all this excavation, and you're gonna do the whole front yard and the sidewalk, that's what you're showing.
You're, you're in there already, I mean, you've basically excavated, so...
Right, to make it a cellar.
You might as well just have the backhoe do the rest of it. It, you know, doesn't really make sense.
I mean, actually, well, there's a floor area issue, of course, because then you'd be probably increasing the floor area, but you'd bring the building height down by one if you expand it into your side yards, like, what's the, what is the, you know, the impact on the school to the, to one side has huge yard area, so arguably, I don't know, you'd have to demonstrate that it wouldn't, the side yard, if built into, wouldn't have an impact on there. And ditto for the medical facility on the other side, right? But it would be an opportunity to pull away from the residential property that you're backing up against, and lower the height of the building. And since it does look like you're doing significant subterranean work, it's kinda, you know, undoing your own argument.
And it would be nice to lower the first floor, perhaps, to, to agree.
Yeah, then you could drop your first, your entry floor down more. Right. You might get more classrooms out of the deal, it's more efficient, because they're all one floor.
And you're also improving the circulation.
Well, look at it, no, well, so I, I understand, I mean, we, so we hear that side yard, we were trying to stay away from the side yard, and for expense reasons, but we'll look at the, I, I think the, the notion of a, certainly a stair, and the stairs in the side yard, and possibly, I guess, structural elements really in the side yard as well, to see if that's a way to, if you bring down the building and pull back from the rear.
Yeah, to reduce the number of, well, not reducing the waivers, because you also need side yard waivers.
Which we, which are...
Different waivers.
We secure the objection, but we need the waiver from you, of course, but...
And then also that issue with the front yard, like that little vestibule imposing on the front yard, why?
Vestibule and office, why do you need that in the front yard?
Well, what it's, it's important, it's actually, what it was doing is it allows ground floor, it allows for ground floor space and it allows for clearance in the cellar space. If, if the entrance way, you have to get into the building, and then you have to get up to the first floor. So if the entrance to the building was flush with the front of the sort of superstructure, if you will, then you've, now you've gotta push back that ground floor area to get to the, to get into the elevator, to get up those first few steps, and it creates less clearance at the cellar, in the cellar level.
But you're dropping your cellar anyway, so...
But not enough, it's still, there's still a difference between, when you walk into the first floor, you're still, you're only at a half floor, you're not up at the first floor, right? The first floor is still five feet away. You're dropping the cell, you're dropping the basement to make it a cellar, because it's a higher space, so...
But if you drop the cellar deeper, you wouldn't have as much height differential on your, on your entry floor.
Well, we understand that, I think, then it, then we've gotta build a new, basically build a new foundation and a new, and a new everything, whereas there's already significant foundation work in place that was, that we've demonstrated, I think, that would, that saves us hundreds of thousands of dollars in construction costs.
Well, if you think about moving your stairs outboard, and you probably would be able to accomplish what you need to accomplish, you just have to sort of rejigger where you've got your reception and...
I understand, sort of as wings, they would come out as...
And you may not need to have sort of this appendage sort of sticking out the front.
You already have stairs outboard on the first floor.
Yeah, so there, you know, you, you sort of thought about that, but I think if you take it a step further...
Those are, right, the cellar, that's a cellar stair.
Right, so you might be able to utilize the, you know, your new stairs that you created, put them outboard and, and bring them down to the cellar. You've got your two means of egress out of the cellar, and you might not need those stairs back there, just saying.
Yeah.
Okay.
All right, I think we had some more questions. Do you wanna go to those?
I think it would be good to include an interior trash room.
Yeah, so there's this warming kitchen, so there are vents here that, kind of reception?
Right.
Right? There are, there are events where there are reception?
There, well, not reception, no, not reception events, but there are, there are events that might, that will be outside directly the 5:45 to 6:45 school program.
Right, but the warming kitchen is what I'm talking about.
Right, that might be involved in adult classes or the likes of that.
So we're feeding the adults, I'm trying to understand, but what are we using the warming kitchen for?
There was something about cooking classes, something?
Yeah.
Yeah, I think you wanna...
Could be one of the schools you want to...
On Saturdays, when we have our longer days, the students use cafeteria, and they'll go downstairs and they'll have some food, and they might wanna warm it up or something like that. So it serves that purpose. Also, if we wanted to have maybe a fundraiser and, you know, serve some light food, or, you know, something like that, it, it's beneficial to have a warming kitchen. It's not, we're not doing any kind of catering service or anything like that, it's something that we're not gonna be using very frequently, but it's nice to have, we're building a new building, it's nice to have.
Okay, so, 'cause one of, one of the reasons I was pursuing this is because when we have schools that have food service, which they all do, right, some kind of thing, many of them don't cook on-site, we still have perishables that need to be stored, and they become a real nuisance to the neighbors. So we asked that there be a refrigerated area for the storage of perishables, perishable trash, and then also that all the trash is stored on the interior of the building until just before pickup.
I think, I think that speaks to our storage issue as well, so I think the vault will help a lot, and we should be able to fit that in the front, like, the laundry is, I think we can stick that in there.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thanks. We need to talk about parking?
Sure. So, I mean, I, I do speak about it in the statement, where I...
Actually, you're supposed to speak about it in the findings, just trying not to get too technical, but it's supposed to be, you're asking for a waiver of the parking, so you should address that in the findings, but anyway. And also, all the waivers that you're requesting should be addressed in the finding, whatever waiver it is, you should explain why you need it, and, you know, what would happen if you didn't have it? That's the, so that you make your case for each waiver.
Right, so I think, right, and I...
Take a look again.
Yeah, no, I understand that, I, yeah, I understand how it works, and so, I think, well, the, the general concept is that if we don't get those waivers, we have fewer classrooms and we don't meet our program. And I, I think that is articulated in here, in that it's, it's explained in a number of places, in the table, and in the...
The rear yard isn't explained like that, so for instance, if you were to cut back on the third floor, you don't lose classrooms, it's a smaller classroom.
Well, you'd have a smaller classroom with a smaller capacity.
Well, but, so what would that do, so what, right?
Well, we talk about that, then it would mean, it would be that, I mean, that, it is, it is in there, it's not, it's...
Well, let's just say it needs to be argued more...
Vigorously. Convincingly. Convincingly.
More convincingly.
So with respect to traffic, I think that the most significant here is that this is a school, and that it's used by 90% of the people who use this school don't drive.
And how do they get there? And how do they get there?
So they get there by getting dropped off.
And then where does.
By about, about sixty, about sixty to seventy percent. Some of them walk, many of them walk. There are two, the two, two significant sources of the students come from Poly Prep next door, and I think it's PS 10104, which is also nearby. Is it 104? And so many students walk from those two locations.
Yeah, teachers.
But, but teachers, and some students, and students will get dropped off. Right now, and it's explained in.
What happens, what do the parents do when they drop their kids off?
They drop their kids off.
I mean, I drop my kid, kid off theoretically, and, and I only have two hours. I'm not necessarily going back home and then coming back. I'll, you know, try to find a pizza or play with my phone. So I'm in the car, what do I do with my car?
Right, well, if you live nearby, it's easy to, it may be easy to go home.
No, you live in Staten Island.
So if you live in Staten Island, it may be an opportunity for you to come into Brooklyn and you spend, now, it's a longer block of time, it's a four-hour block of time. And this may not be, this isn't.
Wait, three forty-five to five forty-five, it's two hours.
No, no, but most of the people coming in from Staten Island probably come on Saturdays. So they don't, they don't make that trip all the time on, on, during the, that's, that's how it works, that's, that's, sure.
So Monday through Thursday, it's a two-hour window, or I wanna say, not even ninety-nine percent, a hundred percent of the kids get dropped off and the parents leave.
Where do they go?
And they typically go back to their homes, believe it or not, because the majority of our students' families live in the Bay Ridge-Diker Heights area. Bay Ridge has been our home for forty years because all the families, majority of the families are there. The ones that come in from Staten Island, Jordan's correct, the majority of them come in on Saturday because it's a longer window of time. And we also have bus service. We've, we've started bus service about two years ago, a small bus, and it's, it's strictly for the Staten Island families. There's one family that gets picked up in Brooklyn on the way in from Staten Island. So the ones, the families that have nothing to do when they come into Brooklyn typically put their kids on this bus. There are a few that live in Staten Island that do drop their kids off at the school on Saturday, but with a four-hour window, they'll go see friends, they'll go shopping. Nobody stays at the school. The only, the only people that stay at the school are the teachers, the principal, and typically one to three board members or PTO members that go to check up on things and help out. That's what a typical day looks like. And that, the one to three board members are typically on a Saturday. On weekdays, you usually know board members, it's just the staff.
So what happens when you have an event?
So, yeah, so, okay, so, events. Typically, our big events, we will not have space in this building for our big events. So our theater, for instance, we currently are using Severin High School's gym, which is not too far away for this year's performance.
But you'll have an auditorium here, so.
Right, so.
What's the capacity of the auditorium?
The auditorium has a capacity, I think, of a hundred and eighty kids, people?
So a hundred and eighty people, and let's just say two people per car.
I would say four. And I'll tell you why, I'll tell you why. We get a lot of grandparents, a lot of cousins, uncles, aunts, all that kind of stuff visiting. Plus, it's the kids, too, the kids that are already in the school. So typically, if you have one or two kids in the school and you're a mom and dad, that's three to four, and then if you have a grandparent or something like that, I would honestly say an average of about four people per car.
So I've still got thirty-some odd cars I have to park.
So you have about thirty, forty cars you have to deal with. And that's, I'll tell you, that's approximately three times a year. Our big events that we might have in this building, if we can fit it, is twenty-eighth October, which is a big celebration for us, and March twenty-fifth, which is our Greek Independence Day. Those are the two main events. Our Christmas celebration is done at Fort Hamilton Army Base because we just don't have enough space for that. It's only the performances that we can, on Saturday, when we have Saturday kids a day, we'll do like an hour performance with the younger grades, and then those parents will leave, and then, so that's a good point, too. We said thirty, forty cars, but they come in, in waves, right? So you'll, you'll have the first, second, and third grades' parents come in for the first hour and then leave. And then this, the fourth, fifth, and sixth grade parents come in and then leave. So it's really not even forty, it's more like, let's call it twenty. Twenty cars come, they leave, then the other twenty come, they leave. And that's probably two, maybe three times a year during those events. The big celebrations, the big, should I say, performances are the theater performances, which we do once every two years, and our Christmas performance, which happens every year. And so those two, for sure, are gonna be offsite. We don't have the space for that, even with the new facility.
So, Jordan, we need this, we need a, a real parking analysis.
I understand.
Where you're doing counts about what the availabilities of parking are, which I understand are poor, and to break down very, very specifically, based, based on your current use, how, your current use and your current location, what happens with those current families? So that you can base that and then project an, an increase, right? Not just kind of imagining, but based on actual conditions today.
Right, so we, I mean, a lot of this is discussed in the Statement of Facts. The reference to Staten Island and families coming on Saturdays is in my document. I know, but I just feel like that there are, a number of points are repeatedly, like it's the first time that we're hearing about them, but they're in here. There's, so there is a little bit of the discussion also about how the school functions and, and currently how it functions. And we talk about how, on a typical Monday, Wednesday schedule, if twenty-five students are in attendance, those twenty-five students are trans, are dropped off, but it result, it's usually only results in ten to twelve cars during drop-off, because someone might be dropping off, typically people are dropping off more than one person at a time. It's a carpool function. So just explaining that, we'll go through that, and I'll get you a traffic study, and we'll do, we'll do the detail parting. And we've done that on a number of different projects. I know what's involved in that, I'm not going to do it.
And be detailed about how, you know, kids are dropped off, you know, is there gonna be a place for the car to pull in, or do they just drop them in the middle of the street?
Right, well, that always presents a complicated issue. I've addressed that also a number of times with the board, and that, it, then it requires the sacrifice of on-street parking spaces. If that's a, that's something we're, we're willing to pursue, but sometimes the community would rather not give up the four or five parking spaces that would have to be sacrificed to create a pull-off zone.
But then you have to explain how, you know, how does it work? I drop my kid off.
Yeah, well, Ninety-second Street is a block, a lane of traffic while the three kids get out of the car, somebody, you know, forgets something, I put my flashers on, I'm, you know.
Right, for the, for the record, we've reached out to the Department of Transportation just recently, and we're scheduling a meeting for the next week or two to discuss a lot of the, you know, things like parking and traffic and safety, things that really concern us. We've talked to, I've gone door-to-door speaking to a lot of the neighbors, and they've expressed to me some of their concerns about current conditions, not even about future conditions, but future conditions as well. And I've jotted them down, and I've presented them to the DOT through State Senator Marty Golden's office. And so we're scheduling this meeting to discuss our needs and the neighbors' needs. We're also gonna help them with some of the stuff that they've noticed that are safety concerns and that are gonna affect us as well. So I think the neighbors' concerns and our concerns are kind of in alignment, and we're gonna be addressing them very shortly. I understand you also wanna study as well, so we'll be speaking to the DOT and we'll work on getting that study.
Right.
Right, okay. But I mean, to, to the point of the study, it's one thing to sort of talk about things in general, as opposed to a real study where modal splits are discussed, I mean, things where, you know, it's using kind of the scientific basis for the studies. It's different than kind of having it in, in general conversation, right? That, that's why. We need the study in particular because we have comments from neighbors who are concerned about the parking.
I understand, we'll, we'll, no, no question.
Okay. Um, and then, only, I think there might be some other ones, but the other thing that I have a concern about is, well, for one, how the drawings depict the setback on the fourth floor. It's shown as a full-height wall, is that correct?
So I think, uh, the fourth-floor setback is shown as a.
Yeah, it's black, you know, the walls are blackened in.
Right.
It indicates that the wall is full-height, as opposed to you looking at the top of a parapet.
Oh, right.
And then I would like you to look at reducing the height at the third floor also, because I think there really is an impact on that one neighbor to the rear, the residential neighbor.
So you're talking about the third pulling back?
Third floor, pull it back on, on those, those levels. And then the other thing is to discuss the finished material, which cannot be EPHIS. It's just the worst.
Right, okay.
It has to be a material of quality for this neighborhood, and, and the idea is that you're asking for something that is special, like you're asking for special relief, and that the product should be something that will hold up in the neighborhood and be a positive, um, yeah, positive force in the neighborhood, not.
Well, I, I hear, that's, I don't, I think that's, can be easily accommodated.
And, did I leave anything out? Did everybody?
No, I think I just had concern about the way the rendering represents the building massing, and it looks much more massive on bulk here and not, and kind of incongruous and not compatible with the surrounding context. I think some thought should be given to the, the treatment of the material and separating this massing into scale that is more representative of the neighborhood. I, I think my concern is this big square that's in the middle, which kind of makes it look much, much more massive than actually it probably is. But if you provide more horizontal striation, if you kind of break it down into something that's more manageable.
Okay.
And I think we had, I had mentioned yesterday about, it's, and under certain conditions, the solar panels can be permitted obstruction.
Right.
But, you know, you have to, there have to be a certain height, and I think have some setback. So are these?
I think these are not.
These are not, so why, why can't you make them permitted obstruction?
I think they have, we'll, we'll look at that, I'll, we'll look at that. It may have to be much lower or, I'll figure out in what context they, they can be permitted obstruction.
That's why you put it on, on the trellis, because a trellis is a permitted obstruction on your.
And with, with all these rooms being used and, and just like two hours during the week and four hours on Saturday, when do the students really need a playroom? You have, you know, is that really necessary? Couldn't you?
I think it's a Saturday, it's mostly a Saturday-used space.
I mean, couldn't you, I, I mean, if that's the reason why you didn't comply with the regulations for the panels being permitted obstruction, because I think the maximum height is like six feet or something, but is that really necessary?
Is, I mean, that a pre-K or, is that one of the requirements for pre-K?
Maybe for the pre-K.
But they have a play area, they have a play area in the side yard.
Right, there's a play area by the side yard, okay.
The, the play area on the side is for the pre-K.
Okay.
And for the UPK, just for them to get out and stretch their legs. But the rooftop playground was more intended for the Saturday program, so that the kids could get out. It's a longer day, and it helps to get them to go out and stretch their legs a little bit when they're stuck.
Is there a park nearby? There is. Do you think it's nearby?
The, there's a park, but there's no real entrance nearby. It's all fenced on our side. I don't know where the entrance is, but it seems to be pretty far.
It's a golf course.
Oh, it's a golf course, yeah, I never saw it.
And the school next to it, you cannot access that property?
No, that's private school. That's a private school. I mean, you could make a deal with them, but that's a private school.
You know, one of the things we may attempt to do with parking and all that is talk to them and see if they can help us, but again, it's private, we can't guarantee anything there.
Right.
Rather see if we can do something with the DOT.
Try to work out something with them, yeah. Well, in particular, because your main parking needs and playground needs are on a Saturday when the school arguably is closed, maybe, maybe they're also doing things, but whatever, so that might be worth looking at.
Hopefully, we can work that out, I just can't make promises for the.
And, but to get back to the subject of the trellis and the solar panels and all that stuff, that's the other thing that's making the building look so big, right? So permitted obstruction or not, because the building is much bigger than what's allowed, this is exagger, this adds another floor to it, effectively.
So one of the things we're, we're attempting to do with the trellis is, we're not, the solar panel consultant recommended that I created this flat solar panel surface that was closed, you know, each panel was attached and just pitched, and it was just this massive structure that would've been completely opaque, and so I told him, I said, "That's just not gonna fly." So we, we created a flat trellis and we spaced the solar panels, and we also created a chain-link fence with what I'm hoping we can install, which is more like invisible fencing. They use it a lot with landmarks. I'm just not sure with the school they'll allow that. But we're trying to create more of a, you know, an air, just a lightened air opening, you know, so it doesn't seem as much a floor as, as a floor would. So we're hoping to make it look a lot less intrusive.
Yeah, invisible fencing is like invisible windows, you know, and you can actually see them.
I beg to differ. I did a project with one, and I can't see it. But I will say also that we are building, our intention is to build a LEED-certified building, as our, this is our commitment to the environment, but also our commitment to the future of the school. We're trying to keep our expenses down. And I know we spoke about EPHIS, you spoke about EPHIS earlier. I have an extensive experience with EPHIS. I learned by making the mistake that everybody makes, and I became somewhat of an expert with it, and I've built a lot of buildings since then with no problems with mold or any of that stuff. So if it's, if it's built properly, it's actually a very efficient material, inexpensive material, and can be also aesthetically pleasing. And so.
You would need to convince.
I can give you some examples of that during the next presentation. But I think that's your concern, right? Is it mold and water?
That it's mold and water, and that it's easily damaged by workers, and then it really can't be repaired.
Right, so anywhere that somebody can touch it, we're planning on using brick. It's only above those, like the first floor is all brick, but the kids will be and all that. Above that is where we're planning on using EPHIS, and nobody will be touching it or able to touch it, and it will be with secondary waterproofing and properly done and inspected, and it will not be an issue. I have a nine-story building right now that I just built a little while ago.
How old is it?
It's two years old.
What about ten years?
I have a six-story building that's about seven years old, and I have other ones also, like case studies, we'll talk about them. I find it to be actually very good material, because it also brings the dew point and the humidity outside in the building, which is where you really want it to be in the Northeast. If it's done properly, it's actually a very good material to use.
Okay, so, but to the point of the massing of the building, that's one reason why we wanna bring it down?
Right.
Because if you're going to be having the solar collectors on the roof and on the trellis and all that, we're really talking about a much taller building than is claimed, right?
Right.
So, okay. Anything else from questions on this side? No? Okay, so I think now we can go to testimony from the neighbors.
Okay.
Before you do, can I just, real quick, I know, and I, and thank you for your time on our behalf. On the parking issue, I just wanna bring to the board's attention, the reason why this site was cho, one of the reasons, and there were several, why this particular site was chosen was because of the white street. Where we are now, and where we rent space, it's a very narrow street. And the school has been operating in Bay Ridge for the last forty years. So I'd like the board to keep in mind that we're not introducing a, a, more of a parking problem than already exists. We've been there, we've been operating for forty years, and we've had no complaints, I know from the Lutheran school and from the neighbors there on a more narrow, which is a more narrow block than this wide, almost boulevard-type of street on Ninety-second Street. So I want the, I wanted to stress the fact that parking would be no different than, than, if anything, it would be much better, and it would alleviate some of the congestion from where we are now on that narrow street. Thank you.
Did the Lutheran school, does the Lutheran school have its own parking space that you use?
We don't use their parking. And again, that's why I say it's a drop-off, strictly a drop-off. It's a, it's a one-way street, parking on both sides, a bus or a second car can't get through until we drop off our kids and then move on. So that's why we're very cognizant and very careful with efficient and making sure that the traffic flows. And so we're, we're hoping that you take that into consideration. Thank you.
The pickup and drop-off incidents are, are quick, too. They're fairly short, they're short, they're relatively short events.
That's the same in every school, but as Commissioner Hinkson mentioned, I left my bag in the classroom just a minute, flashing lights, built a park, drift a park, whatever, that happens. Right, okay, so let's get here from the public. So if there are speakers on this, please come up to the ramp, and, and then you have three minutes to speak. First one to the podium, and state your name. So if there are speakers on this, please come up to the ramp, and, and then you have three minutes to speak. First one to the podium, and state your name.
My name is Andrew Ferguson. I reside at 157 Battery Avenue, which is the corner of Battery and 92nd Street. So the house I reside at is about, I'm guessing, but about 100 feet away from this current school that's proposed. So the house that I'm living in is a residential house. It's owned by Shuang Troy. She sent in an affidavit opposing the waivers. And the reason she bought the house was it was a quiet residential block, and the side of the house is nicely decorated with garden. It's about a two-story house. Next door to us is a medical building. Originally, it was a one-story building, and this property in question that they're interested in is 670 92nd Street. So the residential, I mean, I'm sorry, the medical building next to us is 660 92nd Street. So originally, it was a one-story building and did not obstruct our view. In fact, from our, from our second floor, we had views of Poly Prep and the golf course. The building 670 was for sale for many, 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 many years, and the doctor who owned this medical building next to us wanted to enlarge it. He wanted to double the size of it. Now, he could have bought this medical building, but apparently the price was too high or whatever, he decided to enlarge his building. So his building is now the same site as 157 Battery. It's now two stories. This did affect our view through our windows of the golf course, but from above the house on the roof or something, we're still able to look out and see Poly Prep and the golf course, so. And we have a small garden on the roof, and we do get, you know, a decent amount of light. And I looked along 92nd Street this morning. I walked over to Dahl Green, which is right next to the highway, and I looked at 626 92nd, 628, 630, 632, 634, 636, 638, and 640, and they're all about two stories. So everything is about the same height. Now, if I look down Battery Avenue, again, almost all the houses are either the same height, but there was some larger building built on, on two lots, and it is a little bit higher, but it's set back, and it doesn't even appear to be higher. It still appears to be about the same height, even though it's higher than two, two and a half stories, it still seems to match the, the view. So that's, that's what the neighborhood looks like currently. From the building, the, the school purchase, 670, all the way to Dahl Green, and even from, from, from where our house is on the corner down Battery, all the houses seem to be about two and a half stories. Now, they came around and he said, "Would you please sign my petition to allow us to build some Greek school thing?" And he had a picture, and he had some picture. It looked like a five, six, or a seven-story building. If this was built, it would stick out like a sore thumb, and it, it would create all kinds of problems. Already, we have severe traffic at times on the block for various reasons. People, people going to Poly Prep or coming off the highway. It's a very important route that cars can flow down, and at times it does jam up badly. So it would increase the traffic. It would, it would probably increase noise. They said most of the kid, a lot of the kids will be walking back and forth, and parking is at capacity right now. So you asked him, you said, "Well, how are you going to address parking?" And he says this and that, and he doesn't actually say anything about how they're going to address parking. Or in fact, he says, "Maybe we'll take some parking spots away. Maybe we'll talk to DOT, and we'll have no standing any time except school people or something," which would be terrible. So they'll block the light, we won't, we won't have the sun, and so.
Thanks. Can you wrap up? Because you actually had three minutes, but because you're an immediate neighbor.
They spoke for two hours!
No, no, but the rule is that the public speaks for three minutes. They're the applicant. So, and we have a lot of people who want to speak, but I think we got the gist of your concerns.
Well, you said, the other thing, I'm, you know, I'm glad I came to the meeting, because I'm finding out things I don't know. I mean, as I said, they had this thing, well zoning, and they said, "Well, you know, it, it doesn't really meet the right zoning."
Right, okay, so that's the legal issues that require special experts to discuss. So if you would just focus on, you've already focused on your specific concerns that affect your, you and your neighborhood, so I think now we can move to the next speaker, okay? Thank, thank you.
Yeah, okay. Just, just one more thing.
Thank you.
He said, he said, "This is a one-story building. How, how tall, which let's say is 15 feet high, how tall is the proposed building?"
We can actually give you that information. I don't have it in front of me.
You can reach out to the board and get this information, and you're welcome to come back at any other hearings if you have further comments, but that's the end of your testimony today.
Yeah.
No, no, it's not, it's not. There's a one-story building. He says he wants to use the foundation of a one-story building to build a six- or seven-story building.
The building is, I have a note, it's four stories, and it's proposed to be, but we're trying to bring the height down. The building is, sorry.
Sixty-one.
Sorry, sorry. Do you have the height in front of you?
Sixty-one feet.
Sixty, sixty-one feet high.
All right. He wants to build a 61-foot building on a foundation that was made for a one-story building.
Right. Okay, understood. Thank you very much.
All right, I should come back?
Yeah, there's going to be a continuation on this hearing. You can also submit your testimony in writing to, actually to the board. Right, Tony here will give you information about where to submit the testimony, okay?
All other speakers, three minutes, maximum time permitted.
Sure. Good afternoon. I thank the planning commission here for, on behalf of Senator Golden, I am attending to speak in support of the application from the Greek School of Plato, which has already been.
We didn't know you were here, apologies.
I'm sorry?
Yeah. I'm sorry, we didn't know you were here, apologies, we would have had you speak earlier.
Oh, no, no, they asked me. It's fine. I enjoyed the conversation. I learned a lot. This, this matter has already been approved by the local community board tent, and knowing that the leadership of this school, knowing them and their history in the community, we know that they would be good neighbors and trust that they will take your recommendations and commentary, which is very, very thorough, and proceed with the necessary. The students and the parents deserve this opportunity, Senator Golden believes, for a state-of-the-art facility to be built as their home base to learn and, and advance their knowledge of their Greek heritage, culture, and values. We are working with the Department of Transportation, as, as has been alluded to, to ensure the safety of all the residents in the areas, the students being dropped off, the parents being part of that, and the teachers, traffic safety issues and parking. We have a meeting on tap for that. Bay Ridge, Dyker Heights community is one that is rich in Greek history, and many of our small businesses and schools and civic life have been involved and centered around those of the Greek community. What better way to keep this spirit of heritage alive in our neighborhood for those that have done so much? Senator Golden supports this application on behalf of the Greek School of Plato. We have been impressed with what they have accomplished already, and imagine if they have a permanent home, what the students of today and the students of tomorrow can, can accomplish. Thank you very much, and we hope that we, as this is a city that welcomes people from everywhere, we hope that we will seize this opportunity to recognize the Greek-American contributions. Thank you.
Thank you. One just one, one question? If, so you are going to be meeting with the school and DOT together?
I do, we'll be organizing the meeting, yes.
Okay, great. Okay, thank you. Next speaker. Three minutes.
Hi, my name is Lee Ling Young. I have been a supporter and sponsor of Greek School of Plato for the last 16 years. One of my colleagues, a longtime volunteer, I wanted, I have watched firsthand the love and dedication from her and those who run the school. I have attended many of their charity, charity events, and I have seen the volunteer of the school giving their time, money, and dedication. They're also focused on serving other many charities. Here are some of the recognizable charities. Ronald McDonald House, Pediatric Path Center, NYC Blood Dry, Be the Matchbone Marrows Drive, and the Listers Analysts. The school is funded privately and, funded privately from tuition and donation like, like me, who believes in their mission. Every community and neighborhood needs a Greek School of Plato. I'm a big believer of their mission, standing next to, next to them at every pivotal point of their history-making process. I'm in full support of Greek School of Plato. I hope you are as well, and would be a decision you would not be regretting.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Can we refrain from the applause? It takes time. We appreciate your enthusiasm. Next speaker, please.
My name is Stephanie Christathos. I'm a graduate and past president of the Greek School of Plato. I speak today in support of the petition for the variance. As you heard before, our school has been in the Bay Ridge community since 1977. We have been nothing short of kind and respectful to all of our neighbors throughout the last 40 years. We're certainly not outsiders who are trying to come in and disrupt a neighborhood. We love Bay Ridge and Dyker Heights. This is our neighborhood. This is the neighborhood we all grew up in. We raise our children here. Many of our children attend the same District 20 schools that we attended as children. We did the same local restaurants, shop at the same local stores. It's our mission to enhance and, it is our mission to enhance the beauty of the area, excuse me, and this is exactly what we're trying to do. The site for our new school will, will improve the beauty of the block and the surrounding area. As you know, there's a medical building directly to the left side of the site, diagonal to our building, there's the nine-story hospital, and directly behind us is Poly Prep Day School. On many of the interior streets are also a number of apartment buildings. Our site will definitely fit in and more so beautify the block and the area. I want to personally thank the neighbors that I met going door-to-door, asking for their support. So many of them were in full support of our school, and they cheered us on throughout this whole process. A lot of them don't even know who we are. They may have seen our signs up by the Lutheran school, or when we used to be on 79th Street. They don't even know our mission, but they showed such great support, and it really humbled us. To the neighbors who are still a little skeptical, I promise you that once our doors open, they will no longer find themselves on the opposite side of the door. This, too, will become their home, and we will welcome you with open arms and into our Plato family, just as we have done with all of our neighbors over the last 40 years. Just allow us the opportunity, and you really will not regret that decision. I thank the, all, the entire board for your time.
Applause, please. Next speaker.
Good afternoon. My name is Vassiliou Stanis, and I'm the current president of the Board of Directors of the Greek School of Plato. Thank you for, for your thoughts on the matter and for taking into consideration our petition for the variance, and we, I hope that you vote in favor of. There were a number of discussions early on with respect to what we are, and I can say unequivocally that we are 100% an educational institution. Since the founding in 1977, the prime and sole purpose of this institution, of the Greek School of Plato, is to teach our children Greek language, culture, and heritage. We've done that through a number of venues, which you've heard from some previous speakers. I want to echo some of the same sentiment, that we do this through the very reason why we're all here. We're standing here presenting arguments, and you're here hearing opinions, and we are representing community. These ideals were founded in Greece, ladies and gentlemen, and democracy, which we teach our children. We teach our children through, through band, through music. We teach them through many, many mediums. And so we need the space, and, and you heard some very strong comments, and these are not opinions, and I can, I can state to these and speak to these as well, as Spiro mentioned them before. It is very difficult to, to run a program when we are nomadic in nature, and we have been, going from school to school, renting, you know, a space as needed. These logistical nightmares are very difficult to, to navigate through, but we have done it for the last 40 years and done it successfully. Imagine what we can achieve when we have a place of our own. I get a couple extra seconds for that, right? Many of the people that serve on this, on this board and in, on the PTO and several of the leadership roles of the school are graduates of the school, and they are members of the community, and we're not transients, and we certainly did not just show up on the scene. Many of the individuals sitting here are business owners in the community that we mean to serve. Additionally, just to, just so many points and such little time to address them, but I am also Staten Island resident, so I can speak to the drop-offs. I do them all the time with my children. I probably travel from the furthest distance in Staten Island, and I assure this board that the drop-offs are quick. And we go, we do what we need to do, and we move on.
Okay, if you could just wrap up, please.
Yeah, okay, so, so that's it. I mean, I, I hope that you vote in favor of our petition. Thank you for hearing that.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Good afternoon. My name is Tom Tataronis. I am speaking as Dyker Heights resident. I live less than a quarter mile away from the subject location, and I am very much in support of the building. I have two two-year-old girls, and I very much look forward to them attending the school and learning the things that my first-generation parents were able to communicate to me, and that as a second-generation American, you know, they will have more difficulty with, because I speak English, and they listen to me speak English. It's just my first instinct to do so. Also, as a resident of the neighborhood, I can comment on the fact that I'm by this place all the time. This is the widest street that I'm aware of. Like 92nd Street is extremely wide, and yes, one of the neighbors mentioned it's a runoff to the highway, but, I mean, it's almost uncharacteristic. It looks like you're in the Midwest or something. And there is space here as to drop-off. Anybody that's a resident of this neighborhood, that's part of the game. This is living in Brooklyn. This is part of living in New York City. We go to restaurants on Third Avenue. Parking is tight. We don't stop restaurants. This is what you do. You know, you figure out a way to get in and out. We are New York City residents. And the other board members did mention that they're currently dropping off now, under much tighter circumstances. So with goodwill and good intention, things can be resolved, and I, I hope that the panel here continues to work with the Board of Plato to make something possible, because it's something great that they're trying to do. Thank you for listening.
Thank you.
Good afternoon. I'm the chair. Members of the board, thank you for this opportunity. I appreciate it. I'll try to be quick, just to live over three minutes. My name is Lawrence Tom, and I've lived at 667 92nd Street for 30 years. It's located directly across the street from the subject site, and I'm opposed to this application. To be clear, no one is disputing the Greek School of Plato's right to exist. The issue is the size of both buildings and the complications that come with it. Our neighborhood was recently rezoned to a maximum height of 24 feet and consists primarily of two-story homes. Their as-of-right building already includes a consideration and accommodation of an additional 11 feet in height that stems from their classification, yet this is not enough. They are requesting a four-and-a-half-story building with a rooftop recreation area and solar panels on top of that. They themselves admit that it will look like a five-and-a-half-story building. The sheer size of this building clearly makes it out of scale and character for the neighborhood. Our neighborhood is currently at critical mass in respect to supporting the immediate area's needs. We serve as a host for several community facilities, community facilities, I'm sorry, all within close proximity. We are also a major transportation group that serves the Berzano Bridge, the Parkway, several bus routes, and truck routes. The addition of the out-of-scale and character building will most certainly exacerbate our already overloaded situation, especially when you take into consideration the addition of a UPK program, one that can easily be expanded. I believe with this addition also comes great potential to do harm to our quality of life. Our neighborhood presently does more than its fair share to serve this community, and I do not believe it should be asked to take on yet another challenge. The Greek School of Plato believes that we are trying to deny them the right to exist, but to the contrary, we are affirming their right to coexist. They have forgotten that they are the new neighbors on the block, and now are asking us to sacrifice our existing rights to entitle them to additional ones. They have forgotten that it is our, it is not our houses that are at stake, but our homes that are in jeopardy. They have forgotten that it's not our responsibility to change, but theirs to fit in. The Greek School of Plato is asking you to look beyond their request to put a huge building where it doesn't belong, so that they may be able to serve the children who will use that huge building. Do they see beyond the The Greek School of Plato is asking you to look beyond their request to put a huge building where it doesn't belong, so that they may be able to serve the children who will use that huge building. Do they see beyond the bricks of our homes? There are hard-working families living in well-cared-for homes who deserve to be recognized, noticed, and validated through their rights as quiet citizens in a stable neighborhood. Please remember that. Remember us, the people who live on Ninety-Second Street 24/7.
Thank you.
Thank you for your consideration.
Yes, please.
Good afternoon, thank you for your patience this afternoon. My name is Nick Nicolopoulos. I am a lifelong resident, born and raised in Bay Ridge, as a matter of fact, at the hospital right across the street from the location. I have three kids, I'm an alumni of the Greek School of Plato, I also have three kids there. I sit on the Community Board 10, and I have a vested interest in my community. I have a business, I'm second-generation, forty-five years in the area. So, I don't like overdevelopment in our city. It's happening all around us. But, this is a community organization, this is a family that we know what's happening. It's not an outsider, it's not a developer coming in, which will happen if Greek School gives it up. A developer's going to come in and build whatever they want to build. As far as parking, I'm also a Poly parent, the school next door. Poly throws three major events every year, and we have the luxury of this space being next to Diker Golf Course, where it's virtually empty, there's plenty of parking. And when their parking lot fills up, there's plenty of parking along Seventh Avenue Corridor, which is literally less than a block away from the school. The way it runs now, at Lutheran, we stop, we let the kids off in a rush, blocking all traffic, sometimes up to Fifth Avenue. The rush hour traffic will not be a factor, since the school does not function during the morning rush hour, which is the entrance to the Belt Parkway, that's the traffic that this gentleman was talking about earlier. So I think when we live in a city of diversity and culture and history, I think we should be embracing these kind of projects, where culture continues in our city. Otherwise, I mean, the world seems to be getting smaller and smaller, and anti-culture and anti-history, and it's just becoming a level playing field. I think we should be embracing these kind of projects. They're not, this is not a business. This is not condos being built with, you know, overlooking the Verazano, which could be easily done, again. This is a local, humble Greek School of Plato, which has been there for forty years. It's not a stranger. So please support this project, and the board has supported it, and it's a good thing for us. Thank you.
Are there any other speakers? Okay. You want to respond to any of the comments?
One in particular, really, just that, well, first of all, so we'll be doing this traffic study to further explain and illustrate what the specific conditions are on Ninety-Second and Seventh Avenue. But that there are, while there, this is an R4B and an R5B area, there are a lot of homes, but there are, as was alluded to, quite a few large institutions in the area. There's a nursing home across the street that's six-plus stories, probably more like an eight-story building with very high floor-to-ceiling heights, as it appears. It's in the Statement of Facts as well. The Downstate SUNY Medical is also across the street, which also has a tall building component on Seventh Avenue. There's a four-story building on Parrot Place, so it is not just two-story homes. And then, of course, again, the Poly, you can't have this conversation without acknowledging that there's this enormous 26-acre, or I think, million-square-foot private school campus, which, well, doesn't necessarily have tall buildings, is a huge factor in diluting or absorbing whatever impacts may come from the building that we're proposing next door. And also, then there's the golf course also on the other side of Seventh Avenue, large hospitals, and the Fort Hamilton also. So, there's, these are enormous institutional presences in the area, and the Greek School of Plato is relatively small comparatively. That's it, that's all I really have.
Because, so, in your traffic analysis, because we talked mostly about parking earlier, a lot has been raised about the rush hour traffic on the feeder road.
That's how I understood it, to be an investigation of both
Okay, good.
Parking and flow, and...
Okay, and to talk about when your institution operates and so on.
Our use, of course.
The other thing that was raised, which I thought was interesting, was that the UPK program that's proposed now only for the first floor, right, I think it's just the two classrooms, if the school, the school's empty all day long. So if the school wanted to expand the UPK program, there's sort of nothing to stop it, except us, right, to say you can't expand the UPK program. So the way we're understanding it is, it's what is proposed currently, and that if it's expanded, if the intention is to expand it, you have to come back to the board, because that wasn't the deal, right?
Right.
All right. So, any other questions that might have been raised? Anybody else have before we...
And just to remember to include the use of the UPK program in your traffic study.
The full use of the building.
The full use of the building, not just...
Yeah, and if there are daytime programs for adults that are being planned, include that, like if that was a wish list, and now you have space, include that, right?
Right.
Chair, I just want to correct the number that I had stated. I was looking at the total elevation height. The proposed elevation height is 49, not 61.
But the 61 is with the trellis, and the trellis and the solar collectors?
Hmm, maybe.
Maybe?
Do you have a photo up there in the drawer?
Wait, so, I'm sorry, so, the file of this application is at the board office, and it's public, open for public inspection? You can actually make an appointment to see it? Go ahead.
Oh, it should also be available at the Community Board, and I believe that it's also shared with the City Council, so there are many places you can go and view this file.
The roof height is 49 feet, and the top of the stair bulkhead is another eight, about eight and a half feet.
And the trellis with the trellis?
Is about the same, almost another 10 feet, 10 feet.
It's about 60 feet above curve to the trellis, but that, there's no actual dimensions on the drawings.
Right, we just set back also a little bit from the front. It is, I mean, we did, I mean, it was discussed at the Community Board, the bulkheads were sort of angled back and pulled off that building wall line.
Right, but the trellis...
Is behind that, really.
Is behind that, okay, but nevertheless.
We may have a rendering we can show you as well.
Yeah, rendering.
May give some more perspective into it.
Yes.
And I think you'll see, I think in the plans, that rooftop area on paper in black and white is inclined to look more like a floor than when you see it in a perspective or otherwise. It doesn't really, those things don't usually play out the same way, so we'll...
Okay, but solar collectors are solids, right?
Right, but again, they're angled, and there's space in between them, so it's not a ceiling or something.
But we are looking at remassing this building, right?
Correct, we are definitely looking at that.
Because we, yeah.
Yes.
I was thinking the building's too massive, that there's ways to make it less massive.
Yes.
That would respond to neighbor concerns about appropriateness and character and all that. Okay, good, so, I think there's some work to be done.
Right.
So you tell me, we need six weeks?
How much time do you need? Shoot for four or five weeks, if...
Is that doable, four or five weeks to submit?
Right.
Right, okay, so that would put you submitting on May 18th? Let's see if that works. You could, yes. So you could submit May 25th for continued hearing on June 14th. And what that means for members of the public is, you can come back here on June 14th to hear the rest of the hearing. If you want to testify, you'll be allowed to. If you don't want to come back and listen, we're videotaped, so you can actually watch us on YouTube, which is accessible through our website, which is NYC.com/BSA. Forward slash... Yeah. Okay, thank you very much. Thank you everyone for coming.
Item number three, 33114VC, 2171 Ocean Park.
Yeah, just one second, does anyone need a break? No? Okay, good. Come. Good afternoon. Vera Albin from the office of Vera Albin. Still standing. Okay, give it a moment, so that we're not hitting with the old words.
Because I have the louder mic, as long as we're just at it. I saw the Community Board had a little bit of opposition, where they said they were concerned about the floodplain regs and the driveway.
Actually, not opposition, they were questions from the audience.
Oh, okay, whatever, okay.
So it was just questions that were brought up. Community Board 15 has a new policy, what they like to do is, they like to say occasionally in their resolution, for whatever reason, things that were brought up from the floor when we were at the meeting. There were no real issues with the driveway, people were just questioning how it worked.
That's the regular driveway, not the side yard.
They were concerned, were we going to have it, from what I understand, and by the way, I called Community Board 15 this morning to make sure that their recollection was the same as mine. Their recollection was also very vague, but both of us had a recollection of them being concerned about the slope, somebody asking about that.
The slope into the new parking lot.
Yeah, somebody just asking whether we met the rules. Same thing with flood regs, are you in a flood zone? People just ask these questions.
Okay, and as far as we can tell, no, you're not in a flood, you're in Zone X, right?
We're not in a flood zone, I have to...
Well, Zone X is a zone, but it's not one for which you have to comply with the appendix G.
Correct, we don't have to comply with the appendix G here.
Okay, good.
Okay, very nice and quiet. Well, I did attend your executive session yesterday, actually, I had somebody attend it and heard your comments. To begin, just a few of the minor issues, there was a question regarding the height of the garage door, six feet eight inches, which should clear even the vast majority of full-size SUVs. Full-size SUVs...
That's at the door entrance?
Yes, and we will have it added.
Even if the car is on a slope?
That's correct, I will actually hand that to you, just for your knowledge, and I will have it added to the plan.
Okay. Thank you.
But that should clear, as I said, even a full-size SUV, which usually maxed out around six feet three inches. The next comment was the dimensions of the adjacent structures we can obtain. We'd be glad to add any dimensions you'd like, but if it's a rear yard dimensions you were questioning, I wasn't 100% sure, those are actually already on the rear yard study we submitted. I wanted to make sure what dimensions you wanted.
Oh, I see, no. So, there's adjoining properties that have structures in them, but the, on the site plan, the site plan actually shows the structures on either side, but we don't know where they are, and some of them are one-story and some of them are two-stories, like where does the one-story become two-stores?
It's shown on the plot plan.
It doesn't show the depth, it only shows them, but it doesn't dimension them.
Oh, dimension, ah, okay.
Yeah, that's what the issue was, so that...
Now I understand what you're trying to mention.
That's like the key to where can UVs two-stores.
Understood, now that I know what you're asking for, we'll be glad to add the dimension, I just wasn't sure what dimension you wanted.
Okay.
Let me just make a note.
Just a question, would you mind putting a car in this? Just resubmit it with a car.
Sure, well, that was actually from their DOB set, that's not their BSA set. We'll be glad to add a car and the dimension.
Put the car in there, that's a good thing.
Just to see now it's sitting on a slope. That its head clears.
I usually like to, I usually like to see seven feet clear, so that it, you're really sure.
We'll be glad to show that it clears, not a problem.
What is the height of a typical SUV? I don't have any idea.
The full-size maxes out around 70 inches.
I've just got one, so, we're, yeah, it's six feet and like five inches, I think.
Whoa.
Because it's got, it's got that fin at the top.
I was going to say, typically, they max around 70 inches. That was, there was a little bit of research that went into that one.
Just saying. Our garage door is...
Is that a slow? Understood.
Our garage door is totally clear.
That's going into a level, so it's a little bit...
Understood, we'll make sure that it's clear, I will have...
Efficient tires, though. Can you...
Deflate the tires.
Park on the street.
Stand in line for that.
Okay.
Okay, so the dimensions you want, just to make sure we're clear, it's where rear yard is one-story versus two...
And where it becomes two.
On adjacent.
Because that, yeah, just on the adjacent properties.
Glad to.
Okay.
Regarding the cellar, another pretty drawing to pass up to you.
Mm-hmm.
The architect has provided us. Once again, this is from his DOB set, we'd be glad to add it to the board set if you'd like, but the bottom line is, what he's showing is that the proposal does meet Buildings Bulletin 2012-008, which says that the maximum cellar area cannot exceed 50% of the total residential floor area, and the calculations are shown on there. And the reason you typically see a problem with this is because you're usually seeing homes in an R2 and an R32, and the floor area permitted is so low. This is in an R5 zone, the floor area permitted is so high that it actually allows more space in the cellar.
So that other application that you had where there was a big problem with that?
R2.
That was R2.
Very different. Yeah, that was an R2.
So, but I guess my question is...
R32, R2, I believe it was R2.
What do you need such a gigantic cellar for?
Typically, I did not ask the client, typically, it's something the board has not inquired of us what we're using it for, so I don't inquire of my clients.
Because you can't even plant it.
Because it is permitted, it is permitted by the zoning, as you see, so as long as it's permitted by the zoning, I don't question their reasons for it.
Well, that's considering that we, oh, you're not asking for an FAR waiver.
No, we're not, and this wouldn't even count for it, and we're not asking for an FAR waiver, this is, this zone permits a 125, we're asking, we're proposing a 1.1, well below the floor area that would typically be permitted in the zone.
Playroom, laundry room.
Give the chair first, no chance to look at that.
All right, you need to add a note on this, because I don't know where the windows are, though.
As I said, what you're looking at right here is from the DOB set, this is not the BSA set, because the comments came yesterday, you just wanted to provide me the information so I could show it to your board, and we'll certainly add it to the BSA set if you'd like.
Yeah, so...
Not a problem.
Right, but it should also have a note that there's to be no habitable space in the cellar, and it's not to be converted into a second unit, because if you ask me...
We'll be glad to, that's certainly not Mr. Gibson's intention.
It's not allowed, but just saying.
Well, no, we'd be glad to say that.
Yeah.
We'll add a note regarding habitable space.
We like the kitchen, that laundry room.
Yeah, a lot of people do kitchens down in the cellar for Passover kitchens, it's not uncommon in this community. Whether they're choosing to do it, I don't know, Department of Buildings has not ruled on that yet on this job. So, add a note regarding habitable space, there will be none, and what was the other note you wanted?
No conversion to another unit, those are obviously...
To add a unit.
Yeah.
We'll be glad to add that. I will, no problem adding a note that our client will comply with the law.
Okay, yes, there you go.
Regarding the walls that were being kept on this job, that's never an issue for me. Regarding the walls that are being kept on this job, once again, I have a lovely note from the architect from his DOB plans, bottom line is, this job was not filed under 2014 code, this job was actually filed pre-2014 code, so it's under TPPN 01 of 02.
What's that mean?
So it actually had different rules on what was qualifying as a new building versus an enlargement. What he did was he spelled out on the front of his zoning sheet for the Department of Buildings what was an alteration.
Just we're at the BSA, not at the DOB.
Correct, I thought your question was regarding the alteration status at the Department of Buildings.
Oh, no, no.
I apologize if I was unclear on the question.
My question is, you need to be in enlargement. It looks like most of everything is being removed, so you need to retain an existing building in order to be in enlargement, how are you doing it? The section, for instance, shows that only the first-floor joists are being retained, that's not enough to constitute...
What would your board like to see maintained technically to be considered enlargement for your purpose?
The way I interpret it, based on the definition of building, is you have to have floor area, and I always love the line that Ryan uses, which is, when you remove one of the opposing walls, the floor area leaks out. So you need opposing walls in order to have floor area, and this only has, I didn't even see one wall retained, I only saw...
There is one, one wall certainly maintained.
Okay, the section doesn't actually show it, so...
It's because the section is going through longitudinally, the section I think you were looking at, that shows the floors, whereas the building that's being kept is on the long, the wall that's being kept is on the long side, so you wouldn't see it on the longitudinal section, you'd only see that on the cross.
I don't think they see it on either section, that's part of the point.
Cross taken too far back? Let me check where he took his cross from.
So, as I'm looking at the plan, it's the...
I apologize, Mr. Shai, I just want to finish the chairperson's comment. You're correct, he took the section too far back, not through the remaining portion, he took the section in the new portion of the building. So you are correct, that was a problem, I will have that fixed. I'll have the cross section moved.
So we need to establish the threshold, that this is an existing building to be enlarged, right, and not existing remnants or demolished. right, and not existing remnants or demolished?
I understand the comment. Now that I hear what you're saying, I will speak with the architect, and we'll see what we can do about that. Commissioner, I apologize.
No, 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 that's okay. I was, it's kind of in the same line. I'm looking at drawing A101, and that's the cellar plan, and from that, I only see the northern section of the wall, portion of the northern section of the wall that is going to be retained. Rest of everything is going to be...
On A101, you only see...
In the cellar floor plan.
One wall being maintained.
So the rest of it all is new wall?
That is correct. And I've heard already from the chairperson that I believe this is a concern for your board. I will speak with the architect on that, see what we can do.
Yeah.
Now that we've heard the concern, we'll be glad to speak with the architect about that. I will tell you that he was intending to be here, and I apologize. He had a planning exam scheduled at the last minute, and somebody called in. Somebody had to show up at DOB.
Okay.
He wasn't originally intending to be here with you today.
Okay.
There was also a comment regarding the side yard, and I was going to ask if you could clarify that. I apologize. On that, the note that came back was not clear. And even watching the hearing tape, I wasn't quite there.
No, that's a different one. So this one, you have a 26-foot-wide property, which you get to reduce the combined side yard width by four inches per foot. When I do the math, I get eight foot four inches is the total combined side yard requirement, and the proposal is for a seven foot eight-inch combined side yard. So the way, when I do the math, I get...
This was actually designed under the old board's rules. You recall, the old board, what they used to do is they used to permit us to maintain the pre-existing non-compliant side yard and reduce the other to five feet. That was something that had been done time and time again. I could show you dozens of cases of mine where that was done, and it was granted by this board, not a question. But we understand that now this board is not viewing it the same way, and I do see that.
I beg to differ about this because I researched something like 40 cases where I never saw the board weigh the combined minimum side yard.
They never talk about it, interestingly enough, but if you look at the actual numbers on the plans, you will see that time and time again, the plans were shown.
Those are existing conditions. There are existing combined side yards that don't meet the totals.
I have times we reduced it, without a doubt, and I can show you many cases where it happened, where we had, let's say, two feet on one side and 10 feet on the other, and they allowed us to go to eight feet on the other side, which brought us further below the 13-foot minimum, but the two-foot they were counting as the five-foot, and they allowed us to go to eight on the other side. It was something that was done repeatedly. Again, I understand that this board is interpreting it differently, but when this job was filed, you had been the chairperson for just a few weeks at that point. So I apologize that this wasn't done under the way it's being interpreted now, and I will speak with the architect and we'll see what we can do about this.
We'll just leave that because there's a difference of opinion. Okay? All right. Okay.
There was also a comment about relying on the illegal homes in the area, and I want to make sure your board knows that we don't rely on illegal homes.
Okay.
I know there was a comment that 2161 is illegal. You're right. That's why it was never mentioned in any of my papers.
Okay. No, it's not mentioned in your papers. It seems like the architect is channeling 2161 in the design. It looks almost the same.
I won't get into his head and tell you what his thought process was, but I will tell you without a doubt, the 2161 was never referenced, very intentionally. When I reference any building to your board, I always check the status of DOB. I look for violations. I look for stop work orders, and if I see either one of those, I will never cite any building.
Okay.
But I will say, they do appear on the photographic streetscape because they exist.
Right, I understand.
I can't take them off of that.
To follow your point, 2167 is the one that's built really illegally with open ECB violations. That's one adjacent.
To the left. That one also is illegal. You're correct.
That one's built totally illegally. 2161 actually has permits and a stop work order.
Not for what they did, though.
And when I looked at the zoning diagram, it looks like they should have come here.
Yeah. No question about it, but we didn't cite specifically to either of those. I will tell you, if you look at the photo streetscape diagram, there are quite a few buildings, other than those two, that we're not even going to debate, that we shouldn't discuss, that are three-stores. So three-stores is permitted, is a permitted height, is a permitted number of stories in the R5 zoning district. And if you look down the photo streetscape diagram, which side? It's facing east, which is the one that also has the subject premises on it, you will see just going down the block, 2105 has a third floor, 2119 has a third floor, 2137 a third floor, 2141 a third floor, 2143, 2147. 2161 we'll ignore, 2167 we'll ignore, but there are quite a few on this block that have third floors. There's no question. So it is permitted by the zoning. It's something that is very common in this block. Ocean Parkway was specifically designed to allow for larger buildings. It is a very wide street, and I will go to also, there was a landscaping comment yesterday. We did not provide a landscaping diagram. We'd be happy to do so if your board would like, but I will tell you that if you are fronting on Ocean Parkway, there is no way you won't meet the landscaping requirements because the Ocean Parkway Special District requires that the 30-foot front yard be landscaped. The only exception is the driveway and the walkway to your front door. So it is, I would say, nearly impossible to not meet that requirement on Ocean Parkway.
No, but Ocean Parkway itself has particular requirements, so to go through the Ocean Parkway requirements for what happens in that 30-foot setback, that's what I had asked. So there's very specific requirements about what you do in the 30 feet.
Right. We don't have anything except our driveway and our walkway. Everything is outside of the 30 feet intentional.
No, I know, but once you have that open space, there's instructions in the Ocean Parkway Special District for what to do...
The landscaping.
In the landscaping, yeah.
Oh, so you want details on the landscaping?
Yeah, yeah, so to show that it complies with the requirement. No, no, just to show that it meets the requirements of the Ocean Parkway.
Do you want us to just show landscaping as in the phrase landscaping? Do you want us to write landscaping to meet Ocean Parkway requirements?
No, to show us that you are meeting the requirements. It has like a certain amount of, you're not allowed to have more than a certain amount of paved areas, etc.
So not showing we meet 23451, you want us to show we meet the Ocean Parkway landscaping requirements? Glad to do that.
And then, just to go back to the three-story buildings?
If you'll be with me a moment, I just want to make a note.
Okay.
So I make sure we do this for you. Yes?
20, I'm just looking at the tiny, tiny images. 2105 is one of the ones you listed as three-stores?
2105, yes, that is three-stores.
Can you verify on each of the ones that you listed that they don't have violations, whatever, and that they don't look like they snuck under the radar? If you can get the, look at the zoning diagram. Maybe they were built before. You could get a zoning diagram.
I will do my best to verify the legality of each building or give you anything I can.
Because like 2137, was that one of the bad ones? No.
I'll look down. I'll look at Department of Buildings and see what we can pull for you. No question.
Okay. What else? Just going back to the side yard issue, I understand why on the north side, you're holding that line because you're keeping that wall, so you have under eight feet between buildings, but on the south side, you're making a new wall, and you're just shy three inches and change.
Again, something that was never noticed previously. The old board never really looked at that. I'm sure you remember that that was never really something we discussed, but I'll be happy to make sure we comply.
But it's a waiver I think you're asking for, right? To waive...
Well, actually, Department of Buildings added it as a waiver this time, which was unusual because it wasn't on the original request.
You're three inches short.
Yeah. When we filed this application, they actually didn't have it on there. When we responded to the notice of comments, we got a revised objection. All of a sudden, they added it.
And there it is.
So we'll certainly comply with that. I see your concern, and I actually saw that preparing for the hearing.
Yeah, there's no reason why you shouldn't.
Well, you can't waive it. It's not even a matter of...
It's not.
Not a reason, it's not an option.
So then, and to go back to this rear yard, which is why I wanted the dimensions, this is an incredibly deep lot. You know, yay, you have 130 feet in depth. Most of these houses that come to us have 100-foot depths, so, you know, arguably, you could get a pretty nice house without needing this waiver at all, but I look at your adjacent properties according to that diagram, where they have 25-foot, 24-foot rear yards. That's why I want to know what the depth is, because that's where I think you should line up at, and depending on how many floors there are, that's what you should be using as your model.
There's also one that's 21 feet, I would point out, two houses.
No, I'm talking about the impact on the immediately adjacent properties and the fact that you have 130-foot-deep site, which really shouldn't need this waiver at all, except that your immediately adjacent houses, immediately adjacent, are half shallower than usual lots.
Well, as you know, the BSA special apartment wasn't designed with the word "need" in it. The design was for, to keep people in the community, and these guys are not even maxing out the floor area that's required.
I'm not going to debate with you anymore about what was right.
I understand, but I will say they aren't even maxing out the floor area.
Okay, but we're talking about neighborhood character, and the neighborhood, that's where we're staying. The neighborhood character is the 25- and 24-foot adjacent yards with something, we don't know, one-story or two-story in that location. That's what we're doing. It's a very deep lot, and it's unusually deep compared to the other houses that seek this kind of relief.
I will tell you, of the four houses, three to the right and one to the left that range from 21 to 25 feet, three of them are two-stores in height. One of them is not. I have to recall which one is one-story, but three of those houses are actually two-stores.
Well, the ones that are immediately adjacent, it says...
25, 24, 21, 24.
Immediately adjacent has a three-story to a point, and then it becomes a one-story brick. On the other side, it's a two-story to a point, and then it's a one-story stucco.
I believe the survey may be incorrect on that because I was actually looking at photos of what's happening on the block.
This is a survey. I don't know, surveyors, they're supposed to be licensed, and I don't know if they are.
License doesn't mean it's perfect. Let's be fair.
That's true.
So I will be fair to everybody. It doesn't mean perfect. So we will check it, though, and confirm what the numbers look like and see what can be done here, but I will say that the fact is, the BSA has granted a 20-foot yard on this block, just a few houses over to the left. We've got a lot of small rear yards on this block in comparison to some of the other blocks that we've seen and have grants on. The fact that this is a deep lot, it also requires a deep front yard, and the zoning contemplated that the houses on Ocean Parkway would be larger. This is an R5 zoning district, and they still allowed the special permit. There's a reason for that. If they didn't think that it was appropriate to ever put a 20-foot rear yard and reduce the rear yard in a 130-foot lot, they could have limited it. They didn't. There was never a limitation placed that, well, it had to be on a 100-foot-deep lot.
Well, that's true.
That wasn't placed in 73622 for a reason.
The neighborhood character is what limits, and so that's what we're looking at.
Understood, and as I said, if you look at this block, you'll see that there are quite a few homes that actually have rear yards that are less than 30 feet and some that have rear yards that are 20 feet or less. And that's a diagram that we did submit to your board in February.
Right, so the one-to-one side of us may be legal. That one has 24.
Well, again, we're going to look what's needed.
The other side is illegal, we know. That one has 25.
And there's a 21.
And the one to the immediate rear has a complying rear yard, and the one next to it is complying, and the one next to that is complying, and the one next to that is complying.
But I believe the 21 and the 24 are legal.
We can spin this both ways, so, you know...
Of course, but you've always told us that you can't be the only one.
So let's spin this in the way of you're impacting your immediate neighbor. Give us those dimensions. Tell us more information, and let's keep it at that.
I'll be glad to.
Okay, good. Any other, Mr. Shanda, you wanted to add?
No, I was just actually looking at the Sanborn map and the fact that these are 130-foot-deep and there's a front yard requirement of 30 feet, almost kind of...
Negates...
Negates the 30 feet, so you're left with 100-foot to play with at the end of the day.
Okay, that's fair.
So, but I would like to know what the, when the Sanborn map from the earlier one does show very uniform buildings that were at least 60 feet long or so, 57-foot or whatever the dimension was, and I would like to know what the typical dimension of these buildings are as they stand today.
Typical depth?
Depth, or actually going back to the argument of what's the rear yard today. I'm looking at the reverse way.
Understood. We have the diagram. I'm going to do a little more research on that diagram, see what the heights are and see what's legal, which we had discussed. Okay, good.
All right. So no speakers unless Eric wants to speak. Okay, so what do you think? A month?
I think a month would be fair, especially if it's Passover isn't in the...
So, a month, a month, a month. That would be a submission on, say, sorry, one second. Three, on May 11th?
No.
Yeah. Sorry. I take it back. Totally wrong. Sorry.
A month.
Yeah, so that would be a submission on May 11th, 1, 2, 3, yeah, for hearing continuation on Wednesday, June 1.
June 1 is the review session.
I'm sorry, June 2nd, Thursday, June...
It's been a long day.
It has.
It's been longer. I'll put words in any order at all.
And I would ask just one question. I apologize. On the prior case that I had on today, I had forgotten that Passover fell in the middle of the three weeks requesting. If I speak to the architect and he says it's impossible, would it be possible for me to request a one-week adjournment on that case?
Well, why don't we just make it June fourteenth?
No, no, not this case, the previous case.
Oh.
I'm just asking, because I realize that I had forgotten about Passover in the middle when I asked that.
One fifty-eight?
Uh, first case on the upcoming calendar, seven seventy-nine. If it was necessary, and obviously, I'll stand it as is, and if I need.
Okay, well, adjournments are always necessary. I don't know if we reopen and we just change the date. Do we do that?
It's continued hearings.
It's continued.
Continue.
It's continued.
I can speak with the architect today, see if he can do it, and email you tomorrow. If not, just as I had forgotten, Passover was a full week in the middle.
If we get the adjournment request, now we can just move it on our calendar.
Yeah, okay.
I apologize for that oversight on my part.
Okay, okay, that's fine.
Thank you.
We'll say.
Thank you.
Item number four, thirty-four fifteen BZ, two twenty-three sixteen, Ocean Parkway, Brooklyn.
Hello, Eric Palatnik.
Really?
Hopefully, you've got a few more words you could put in order. We attended your review session yesterday, and we heard the comments from the board, and I wanted to pass up some materials to the board. She should have. She should have collated while I was waiting, I apologize. Too busy texting and emailing.
Once again, you spaced yourself.
Once, once again, that's not good. While, while the paperwork is, is going around.
I collated for you.
Only collated already?
No, I didn't collate.
I was going to say, it's very impressive you did.
Geez, Louise.
Boy, you give us enough to look at.
Well, you know, a picture's worth a thousand words. So, I really thought that the board would be satisfied with this application, and, and I thought so because the request is rather modest. The applicant, a homeowner who's anxious to enlarge for his family, of course, as most of these applicants are, is in the district, in Ocean Parkway Special Subdistrict, in the R4. The FAR that could be achieved as of right is point nine, we're asking for point nine five, rather negligible requests, especially in the world of special permits. The side yard that we're seeking to maintain is a existing side yard, and we're really only seeking to maintain it at the, the one portion where it already exists, really, and bump out in the back a little bit, but we're not seeking to, to run along that whole property line that's on the right side of the home. And the left side of the home has an eight-foot side yard proposed, which is a fully compliant eight-foot side yard. And the front of the home has a thirty-foot front yard, which, as you just heard from its Altman, is part of the Ocean Parkway Special Subdistrict requirement, which is fully compliant. So really, the whole reason we're here is really for the rear yard. That's basically the, the number-one reason we're here, and it's to accommodate bedrooms. And this application was filed about a year ago, so it hasn't, unfortunately, you know, things have evolved at the board since we started with the application, and we'd like to give you more of a rear yard clearer study. I heard the board's comments yesterday, Madam Chair, I'm sorry that you had to create your own. There was one in the, in the file, I'm sorry, the copies weren't clear. But the, the pictures I just passed up, what I'm, what I'm trying to, to show through these pictures, is that the home to the left of us is a through-lot home that runs right across our rear yard.
Right.
And you're left with these four homes between that home and a six-story apartment building that's on the other side. So all, this whole area, you know, typically, and if you look further south on the block, there's really no character, because you're in this, to the rear yard, you know, this, the donut that I know that, you know, we've often talked about when, when I'm hearing these applications. And that's primarily because Ocean Parkway cuts in an angle at this particular portion, and when it does, the houses sort of got mumble-jumbled over the years, and, and you don't really have that, that open, wide-open space that I know the board is always trying to maintain. In addition here, you've already got a home that's got a twenty-four-foot rear yard right now, it's not even the full thirty that typically would be. And also, what I passed up to you, and I know that it doesn't hold that much weight with the board, because, as the board has told me before, homes can move, people move, but we passed up this to show you that the people around us are okay with what we're doing, everybody's okay with it. The reason I'm making such an impassioned plea is because the homeowner is really here, and he's spent a year of his life endeavoring with this application and holding off to gain that extra four feet in the rear, and that, that's.
Well, let's stay with the four feet in the rear. The four feet in the rear is in part dependent on the extension of the side lot line, the side lot, sorry, the side yard incursion that doesn't appear on any of the Sanborn maps.
We understand that that's unfortunate, that we couldn't find that on the Sanborn maps. The architect was here, he had to leave. We submitted photos to the board. It's, from all indications, I know it's not showing on the Sanborn, from all indications, it's all the same, the house hasn't been touched since it was constructed. It's the same brick facade that's on the home, that was put on the home when it was built, and every, all the materials, all the facing materials, everything to it are exactly the same. But having said that, if, if the board were to say to us that there's, there's a problem with that, I mean, obviously, we'd, we'd have to redesign around it, and, and work around it, but the, the photographs and the architect's experience, looking at the house and seeing the materials, are that there's got to be some type of error with the Sanborn map, because it's.
For all those low, many years? Every Sanborn map is wrong?
That, the picture, I don't, I don't have the picture in front of me right now, unfortunately, but I don't know if the board has seen the picture we submitted.
Saw it, but you know, people re-clad houses, people reuse brick that they take from somewhere else.
That wasn't, it's, it's old as the hills.
We don't have, what?
It's old as the hills.
It was the hills.
It's old as the hills.
Sixty-one, this hills could be nineteen seventy-five.
I don't know what year the hills were created, it's sort of an off saying, but you get the gist. I, I understand what the Madam Chair is saying, and we, obviously, it's not on the Sanborn maps.
Right, and that's what we use, right? Or Buildings Department drawings, but you don't have either.
I know, and we've coming up dry on both of them, there are no Buildings Department drawings on file, and, you know, that's, which is not uncommon for homes of this age, for those to disappear through the years.
What are we supposed to do, right? Because we're not forensic experts.
You're not, obviously, but, by the way.
Carbon fourteen analysis.
I'm trying to think of, on my feet, of some other way that I could, that we could prove to the board.
I mean, what I'd have to say is, if DOB determined that you could, that you could retain that, because at this point, I'm like, it needs a note saying that's for DOB to decide whether you get to retain that. If DOB were to determine that that's a pre-existing condition, that's a different thing, right?
Well, that's, all right, so you're doing the thinking for me, for somebody who can't put a few words together in a day, you're doing okay.
I wrote that part down.
You wrote that part down, aren't you? So, I'd be happy to go bring it to Commissioner Gluckman's intention, and see if maybe I can get some, some thoughts from him, because the, the evidence that we've seen.
They, they don't have old photos. You need photos from nineteen sixty-one.
Whole family photos.
People standing right in front of that little.
If only we had it.
You know, you're going to need this in the next forty years.
Yeah, if only. Too bad they weren't a zoning attorney that built it, they would have had photos of it.
Right.
Well, you've given us an opportunity to at least bring it to the commissioner's attention, so I'd like to, to take you up on that offer, and, and to bring it to their attention, and see if we could somehow get them to opine on the issue, because all evidence does indicate that it, it wasn't an add-on, it wasn't an afterthought, that it was part of the, the construction of the original design, and we'll do our best to try to find something to support it.
So, from the, sorry, from the Sanborn, it seems like before nineteen thirties, all of the properties along Ocean Parkway were through lots. Then, somewhere in nineteen thirties, some of those ones closer to Avenue W got divided into those fronting on Ocean Parkway East Fifth, which is interesting, because some of, that, that kind of exacerbated the rear yard issue, because you have the thirty-foot setback. And at that time, I don't know what the rear yard requirements were. I'm just.
Say that again? So the thirty-foot setback at the.
So, so the ocean park, all these property on that block, seventy-one, eighty-one, were all through lots, went from Ocean Parkway to East Fifty.
Right.
East Fifth. It's only in the thirties or so, at least from the thirty Sanborn, it seems it was divided into lots fronting Fifth and lots fronting Ocean. And at that time, I, yeah, and then.
But most of the lots on the block are through lots, it's just these kind of four.
Except for those, and those were the only ones that were subdivided, and.
But this building didn't exist in the nineteen thirties.
Sixties, it was built in the sixty, sixty-eight is when it first shows up, so, and with the thirty, all of them seem to have maintained a thirty-foot setback from Ocean Parkway, so it would be interesting to know what the regulations were that allowed them at that time to build into the rear, if that's one way of going about it. I don't know if I'm making sense.
But so what does this do for us?
Well, no, I.
It's juicy.
Well, I think the, the question that's coming up is they, I, I think what she's raising, if I'm, if I can interpret, if I speak, if I speak Chapa Shonda correctly.
I'm losing it.
No, I think what's being said, though, is that they all appear to respect the thirty-foot setback at the front.
Yes.
So the question is, but they're all lot line, many of them are on the lot line, and many of them have less than the required thirty-foot rear yard, so the question becomes, how, how were they constructed?
Right.
Oh, sixty-one, which, I'm sure it's no accident that they're all respecting the thirty-foot front yard.
Right, so there must have been some regulation, some requirement, and what was the requirement that applied to the rear yard?
So maybe there was something quirky in, in, back then, in the zoning. Now, it's an avenue that, that we could look at, and we appreciate the board's consideration, even of entertaining, because I know the Sanborn maps are typically dispositive, but I just found the photographs, and I'm sure your board has them. I mean, it's literally everything right down to the awning, the aluminum awning that's over the window is all from this period.
No, that's not circa nineteen fifty, they didn't even, nobody had those.
But you know, the existing plans don't show that window.
Excuse me?
The existing plans don't have a window in the side yard incursion.
He's, the architect probably just didn't draw it.
Wow.
Well, that's, those are current, that's a mistake by the two thousand fifteen, that's a mistake by the two thousand fifteen architect.
Well, how do I?
That's a mistake, but it's, but I'm, I see what the board is saying, we understand it, and we'll do our best to try to find something.
Okay, so then, going back to the rear yard, I, for one, I think it's kind of wacky what's proposed, is this twenty-four-foot rear yard on the first floor, and then this strange overhang on the second floor, but I still don't even get why it's needed. You've got so much floor area that's being added to this house, you know, the house is being expanded dramatically without needing to rely on that extra depth. And by the way, the site plan is incorrect, because a site plan is taken from the air, right? So it's not showing that the, the twenty-foot rear yard on the second floor.
Yes, he should have dimensioned it on, on, I noticed that as well, that where he has the twenty-four with the overhang, he should have ran.
Right.
A line for twenty feet from the rear.
Because it'd be, you know, a little bit different, arguably, if it was only a little bit of an incursion, an extra four-foot incursion, but I just don't see that, I don't see why.
Well, you know, that's something.
It's such a large expansion.
Something we could certainly, going with Madam Chair, I mean, we're, obviously, everybody's always after the bath, the bedrooms. The bedrooms are, are the key.
There's a walk-in, lots of walk-in closets.
Well, that's what I'm suggesting, perhaps on that side of the home where the bath is, as Madam Chair was just discussing, perhaps we could take a few feet off of that side, and bring it back, and, and allow for the bedrooms, cut the line where the, the second bedroom is, one hundred and seventy-four square-foot bedroom, allow that child to have the benefit. By the way, I was thinking of the chair the other day, you should know this. My home is under construction right now, and, and our garage, I got a variance for four feet, just as a side note, we got a variance from our town board.
Four feet, you could put a kid in four.
Well, let me just tell you, let me just tell you.
Four feet.
Wait, don't bang your head so quick, Madam Chair, it's, it's sort of a zoning story. So we're all living in the garage right now while the house is under construction, and, but they built out the four feet in the rear. My office is in the four feet of the rear.
Like I said.
And I am thrilled with that four feet. I am, I say every day, I say, thank God.
We keep in mind for future applications.
But what's the size of your rear yard?
Yes.
The rear yard, it's in Long Island, it's much smaller, it's about nineteen feet, it's a very.
It's about.
It's about.
I'm sure you know what it is.
I don't remember it off the top of my head.
Yeah.
But it's certainly not thirty feet, but that's, that's the rules out there. But I'm just saying, the four feet, what I, the point I'm trying to raise is, the four feet, I'm looking at them like, this made a big difference in my world, and it just made me realize how much more important it is to all the applicants, and that's, that's all they're after.
I know a lot about what four feet is, so, that's not what we look at, we look at neighborhood character, right? And, and the impact on the neighborhood.
So let us see.
And in addition to which, you have this huge, underutilized attic, so if you want to put extra children in much better space than four feet, there's this very nice attic where if I were, you know, an independent kid, I want to be away from the other kids.
That's when you get older, like Greg Brady, but the younger kids, the, the younger kids and the, the parents like to have them sort of in yelling distance. But with, I, I think that if it's okay with the board, we would like to amend the plan as we had just discussed. We'll see what we could do with Department of Buildings to see if we can get some kind of nod from them.
And then, also with respect to your attic floor plan, I don't understand where that section is taken, you know, a floor plan is actually a horizontal section. You've got to hit structure there somewhere, or you're not holding up a roof, so that's not an accurate representation of the attic, and we also need a roof plan.
So, are you asking for a point nine five, or are you asking for one point oh five?
No.
Have you decided?
Point nine five.
And did you include the greenhouse?
The greenhouse is not included in that calculation.
But you should, you have to.
You, you have to, and that's probably what's going to bring it back up to, there, I think, isn't there one, yeah, there's one point oh five stated twice, and point nine five stated once, so.
Right.
Twice is.
I'll clarify for that.
Yeah, greenhouse counts as floor area, it just doesn't count, it's, it's an obstruction permitted in the rear yard.
It's a permanent obstruction.
If it's six feet or less, even though I'd argue that when they talk about thirty-foot rear yard, but never mind, that's for the Department of Buildings to play with. The other question was, there was another question that was missing. Oh, frontage. This house, we need frontage analysis, because the house is wide.
Yeah, we'll give you, one, some of the photos that I passed up, one of the packages of the photos, did try to show that to the board. The one that has, package that has the apartment building in front of it. We did try to give you some pictures to show you other apartment buildings and other homes around us, that just show you the expanse of brick that's, that is on the street right now. We showed you a series, and we'll do this in a formal study, there are a series of semi-detached homes with a lot of frontage, and then, there's one particular home that's second from the last page of that study of the photos that we submitted, that shows a house that's very similar to ours. Again, that's almost expansing, expand, extending along the entire frontage, because the way the block cuts at this point, the homes, some of them have large amounts of frontage, so I don't believe that we'd be disrupting the character, but we'll provide that for the board's records.
Good. All right, and if you could just verify providing a preliminary firm map, that the house is not in the flood zone. If I were the owner of this building, I would want to know that I'm just on the edge, it looks like, of the flood zone, so for me, I'd want to be lifted, just because, you know? But anyway, it's not required, I don't think, but if you could verify.
Be happy to. Thank you for giving us the opportunity to go back to the Department of Buildings.
So then, since you're going to do that, you're going to need some time.
Yeah, if we could submit, maybe it's beginning of April now, maybe if we could submit first or second, second week in May.
That's enough time to go back to DOB?
Hopefully, Commissioner Gluckman sometimes will allow us to get in there if we're under some time deadlines, and the client's been waiting quite some, quite some time.